Council to order. There are two council members who will be participating in the meeting remotely this evening. Councilmember Wong is participating remotely from the location shown on the meeting agenda under Government Code Section 549453B. Mayor Chow has a contagious illness and will be participating remotely under the just cause provision of the Brown Act. To comply with the requirements of that provision, the mayor will remain on camera for the duration of the meeting. In addition, all votes will be taken by roll call. Mayor Chow, are any individuals 18 years of age or older present in the room with you?
No.
All right, thank you. So now, if you're able to stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance, please do so. And as a reminder for people on Zoom, to please mute your microphone. Next, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fuun?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
All right, thank you. Before we go into the closed session report, council and the community wish to thank our city attorney, Chris Jensen, for all of his work as our dedicated city attorney over the past few years steering us through several difficult legal matters with great skill and caring for our community. This will be his last evening serving with us on the dais as he moves on to even greater endeavors. We are grateful to his excellent and wise stewardship of our city's legal matters. His exemplary work ethic, dedication, spirit, and depth of knowledge will be missed. Thank you, City Attorney Chris Jensen. You will be missed and know that your work has been greatly appreciated. With that, City Attorney Jensen, will you please let us know if there are any closed session reports? Thank you.
Yes, thank you Vice Mayor Moore, first for your very kind words and also I'd just like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve in this position. So I've enjoyed working with all of you throughout my time here and I just wanted to say thank you, you know, and just to know that I appreciate the position. For the closed session report, so there was a closed session held on February 12th to consider the appointment of an interim city attorney. You'll see some of the results of that closed session on the agenda today. There was one reportable action from that closed session and that action was that council did appoint a subcommittee consisting of Vice Mayor Moore and Councilmember Fuun to negotiate a contract for the interim city attorney. That motion was approved by a 3-2 vote with Fuun and Mohan voting no.
Thank you, City Attorney, and may I allow a round of applause for your performance? Will you indulge that?[241.51][241.51](applause) Thank you. So now we move on to ceremonial items. We have a ceremonial item requested by Mayor Chow in recognition of the Oddfellows Cupertino Lodge Number 70, which has provided volunteer community services for over 125 years. It is part of our community spirit which makes our city a great place to live. We will first have some words from Tom Blackburn, the Secretary of the Cupertino Oddfellows Lodge Number 70. Welcome, Tom.
Do I speak up here? I've never done this before.
Yes, please.
Okay, okay, it can be heard. Honorable Mayor, council members, and fellow community members, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Tom Blackburn. I've been the secretary at Cupertino Oddfellows Lodge for five years and we've done a lot of things. We are located across the street from Safeway on Stevens Creek Boulevard, just in case you want to try to find us. Let's move this over here. There we are. Okay. The Independent Order of Odd...I'm going to be reading some of this stuff because I have a hard time remembering it all. Some of us people have great memories and I'm dressed in black, you know, like Men in Black except also gray, things like that. The Independent Order of Oddfellows is a global organization founded on the principles of friendship, love, and truth with a commitment to serving others. Here in Cupertino, our local Oddfellows Lodge embodies these values through a wide range of charitable activities directly and indirectly impacting our residents. One of our core missions is to provide support where it is most needed. Over the years, Cupertino Oddfellows has spearheaded numerous initiatives to assist families facing financial hardships. We support local schools and provide aid to seniors and veterans. Presently, we host American Legion Post Number...I've got to read the numbers, 642 on Mondays, on the first Monday of the month. This kind of support is done through food drives, scholarships, and offering the lodge to charitable groups such as Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, music groups, dance groups, martial arts groups, and many fundraisers for groups like the Cupertino De Anza Lions Club, which raises a lot of money and does a lot of good. Education is one of our top priorities. Each year, we award scholarships to local high school students to help them pursue their dreams. We also support local schools by donating supplies and funding programs that enrich students' learning capabilities. Beyond education, the Cupertino Oddfellows takes great pride in commitment to alleviating food insecurity. We partner with local food banks and shelters. We organize food drives and provide meals to those in need. This past year alone, our members have helped collect and distribute thousands of pounds of food to families struggling to meet their needs. Additionally, our organization extends its charitable efforts beyond Cupertino. We are proud to supporters of the Rebecca's Children Home in Gilroy, kind of a little bit far south, which provides essential care and services to youth at risk. About 14,000 kids in Santa Clara County have been served in this way by the Rebecca's group and all Oddfellows Lodges, not just ours, support that. We also contribute to the Maui Fire Relief Fund. Many of our members have come from Hawaii and so it's a very significant thing for them to feel that we've helped over there. Every year, we participate in Oddfellows Rose Bowl Float Project, which symbolizes our dedication to fostering unity. My wife, Lily Chin, and I have been there this last year. In fact, my shoes, if you can see them, I told these high school students here, they're still dirty from gluing on flowers, so it's kind of interesting that I'm still wearing stuff like that, even Men in Black. Let's see, we also support things through our vision project. This is a project where we provide eye care and vision assistance to those in need. We collect eyeglasses, get them refitted, lined up, and find the right prescription for the people who can't afford those things. We would not be able to do all these things without the dedication of our members and the generosity of our community partners. There is always more to do, so we welcome anyone who shares our vision of service and goodwill to join us in making a difference. Upcoming events are fundraising pancake breakfast on March 8th, it's a Saturday, from about 8:00 to about 10:00. We raise funds for cancer research. We've been doing this for a number of years. One of our members in Cupertino passed away from cancer, so we think it's important to support his family and other people in need like that. Upcoming events also may include hula classes, ukulele classes, monthly, and we have Hawaiian music jam session that happens once a month. I also teach Aikido at the lodge, so many types of groups, including Boy Scouts and others, have benefited from it. One of my music groups, the FICO Chinese Youth Orchestra, stumbling over that, we supported them by giving them a venue where they wouldn't be able to do it for those youth. With gratitude, I thank the city council and for your ongoing support of organizations like our Oddfellows. It's through collaboration and shared purpose that we will continue to uplift those in need and build a stronger, more compassionate community. Thank you for your time. I invite you all to learn more about Cupertino Oddfellows. Come to our event, be part of our mission, and create your own project. You can be found, we can be found at CupertinoOddfellows.org or just look it up. Thank you very much.[647.29][647.29](applause)
And Tom, we need you to come back. We're going to present you with a proclamation and have a photograph with the city council. Thank you. And here is your proclamation. Whereas the Independent Order of Oddfellows Cupertino Lodge Number 70, the Cupertino Oddfellows was established in Cupertino, California in April 1899 and has met continuously in Cupertino since that date. And whereas, the Cupertino Oddfellows is a nonprofit organization that promotes the values of friendship, love, and truth in addition to seeking to improve the human condition. And the Cupertino Oddfellows has maintained the premises at 20589 West Homestead Road, Cupertino since 1958. Cupertino Oddfellows has made its premises available to citizens with common interest in cultural activities such as music, dance, and martial arts. Cupertino Oddfellows has facilitated the work of services groups and other nonprofit organizations by providing them with space free of charge or at concessional rates. And the Cupertino Oddfellows donates to local and global organizations that help ease financial hardship, improve health, aid the distressed, and support children in need. Want to thank Mayor Chow for recognizing your organization and let's take a photograph. Thank you so much.[754.82][754.82](pause) The subject, it's item two, presentations on the mayor's initiative regarding Resolution 07-103 to be announced at the February 26, 2025 State of the City Address. Mayor Chow, would you have a presentation for this item?
Okay, sorry. Let me share. You don't see my screen?
Yes.
So I discovered that there is actually a 2007 resolution on mayor's initiative budget where the mayor is supposed to present what the mayor has in mind for mayor's initiative before the State of the City Address. Somehow, this hasn't been implemented as far as I know in the recent years, so I thought this is a good chance to start. That seems to be like a good idea. So the State of the City Address will be February 26th, that is next Wednesday. And the mayor's initiative, the main one that I'm going to launch, is called Cupertino Stories. And this is an effort to try to collect stories from everyday people, everyday heroes that are making history every day, which make Cupertino the way we are today. I have felt that whenever we talk about history in Cupertino, a lot of times it's about a building from 100 years ago. And then, at the same time, we have a lot of people who have created the history to make the Silicon Valley we are living today, and many of them are passing away, but many of them are still living in the memories of a lot of people, so I hope to capture them. And not only stories about people, but also organization, so that we can capture this idea is at the end, I hope, we can collect 1,000, 2,000 entries in a survey format so that it will be a spreadsheet or we call dataset. Then it's 1,000 entries of data about Cupertino people and organization and anyone who have ever lived in Cupertino. Then ambitious goal is, in the next phase, maybe next year, there could be a project to extract stories using artificial intelligence tools, extract stories from the many entries. And this also is in line with the 70th anniversary of Cupertino. So hopefully this year is a year where we are celebrating our history, but we are also capturing our history while we are creating them. So anyone who has lived, who studied in high school, Cupertino High, Monta Vista High, maybe they moved away, but then they might be making impact from, and so we can capture what kind of impact Cupertino is making from their next generation, even if they moved away. So I thought that would be interesting to capture. Besides that, so according to the resolution, the mayor's fund is under the city manager's discretionary fund that's budgeted for $5,000. And so I will be using that to cover the first drink of the monthly mayor's coffee. And here are some things I'm hoping to do this year, but might be too ambitious, but it is all, depends on whether we have partners that could help me accomplish that. So first thing is I will sponsor the May 24th AAPM Multicultural Festival as organized by AAPA and Arthur, AAPA Asian Parent Association and other organizations. That will be held in the Civic Plaza in front of the library. At the same time, we also hope to host AAPA Art Festival in the community hall so that we can have art exhibition from professional artists and also student artists together with the cultural festival. And so I will use the mayor's fund to make the room reservation and likely need staff support just to make the reservation. The partners will be organizing the art display. And another idea that I've always wished to do and hope to realize is a community dance together in the plaza, because this is something that's popular in China, in Taiwan, and this is something I have loved to do when I was in college. I was in a folk dancing club. We did, we do folk dance from all kinds of culture, from European, bavaria dance, Jewish, now we have Taiwanese dance, and so all kinds of dance, Indian Bollywood dance. So the idea is, we are not watching other people doing their dances. We want everyone to participate, to do the folk dance from other culture. So it's dancing together. Hopefully, we'll maybe host two or three in Saturday afternoon. And then, as a follow-up for the Cupertino Stories, likely we will have, the partners will help us host a series of workshops to get people together to submit entries and create entries for the Cupertino Stories. And maybe we will have donations for internships, again, high schoolers to interview seniors to create entries. And then, we will be partnering with Cupertino TV Productions Group to help create some videos from the entries submitted. And we will be partnering with Historical Society Library Foundation, Rotary, and the Sisters Cities, and Dingding TV will also be partnering with us. So these are just some ideas. So if anyone is interested in volunteering and partnering with this project, please contact me. I do still need the help to create the website, that's still, so if anyone can help with that. And if you want to join us to create stories together for Cupertino, let me know. Okay.
All right, thank you Mayor Chow, for the presentation on your very multifaceted initiative, and it sounds like you have some great volunteer opportunities for anyone interested, elchow@cupidino.gov. And City Attorney, would I be moving on to postponements of orders of the day at this time?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So next, postponements and orders of the day. Are there any postponements or changes in the agenda order from the city council?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we move on to oral communications. Madam City Clerk, will you please provide instruction for oral communications and begin with our first speakers if we have them? Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first come, first served, first heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may however briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Anyone wishing to provide comments on this item, please have your request to speak card submitted in the next nine minutes or use the raised hand feature virtually. So Vice Mayor, we have, so far, we have, I see, we have five requests to speak from individuals, which is 15 minutes. We also have a group request, five individuals requesting to consolidate their time for up to 10 minutes, so that will bring us to 25 minutes.
Okay, let's proceed.
Okay, so first we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Avani Bimaya and Group, and Munni Mari Patla. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Congratulations, Chris, on your career and good luck in the future. Thank you very much for your service. We always learn a lot from our attorneys. So tonight, I had attended the Santa Clara County Teacher and Affordable Housing Open House that was, I believe, last week, and this was at Collins Elementary? I'm losing it here. And it was very, very well attended, lots of good displays, lots of people there, people to explain what the focus of the project is, and it looks like they're boots on the ground, ready to go. But I did notice three outstanding problems, which I think I sent you all an email, I believe, last week with several of my concerns. One of them is, the neighborhood that is adjacent to the west side of this project is unfortunately going through another situation where someone wants to open up the wall. This neighborhood went through this in about 2005 with the previous owner of Valco, and it was quite a drawn out affair, people calling each other names, very, very upsetting for the neighborhood. I am very, very concerned that this neighborhood is being harassed again. I don't, my understanding was that the Valco was supposed to be its own neighborhood there. This project from the county is part of the Valco, the Rise neighborhood. I know it's not part of Sand Hill's property, but is part of their neighborhood. I see no reason to take the wall down because that is a separate neighborhood. One of the problems of miscommunication is no one knows what elementary school these children are going to. My understanding was that the Rise Valco children were going to another elementary school in my neighborhood. They're also supposed to be attending the junior high of Hyde. Now, the first time I ever heard anything about them going to the elementary that is in the north Cupertino Wall neighborhood was very, very startling. I think we need to find out where this information was. Also, this project does not have enough parking. It's very, very evident that people will be trying to park all over, everywhere. They need to get more parking. Also, West Perimeter Road, which is the closest access to Stevens Creek from this project, is a mess and needs to be fixed up.
Thank you, Jennifer, that is your time. And next we have Avani Bimaya and Group, followed by Munni Mari Patla, followed by Welcome. So I see you have all five of your speakers with you. Thank you. If you'd like to share your names, that, it's not required, but helpful for the minutes.
Can you see the presentation? If, there we go. Yes.
We're a project unlocked and our motto is that we unlock the potential of local businesses.
My name is Avni and I'm the project chair.
My name is Akshata and I'm the deputy chair.
I'm Raghav and I'm a committee member.
I'm Pragni, I'm also a committee member.
And I'm Kelly, I'm also a committee member.
A video, if you could set the timer to ten minutes, thank you.
So today, we're going to be covering who we are, what we've achieved, what we've found, and what we hope to do.
We are students at Cupertino High School located in Cupertino. We're part of the Career Technical Service Organization called FBLA, which stands for Future Business Leaders of America. FBLA has over 200 K student members nationwide with multiple high school chapters in every state. FBLA's purpose is to inspire and prepare students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership experiences. We are specifically part of the American Enterprise Project, or AEP. We help to create awareness of the U.S. Free Market Economic System and also help to improve the functioning of this system.
This is what our AEP project has achieved thus far. First, we focused our project goal onto excessive regulations due to their disproportionate effect on local businesses. Second, we were able to work with the Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce in order to create a survey that asks local businesses about what regulations they might struggle with. And finally, through this collaboration, we were able to get our survey out to hundreds of businesses and gain input, individual input, about the experience of running a business while also having to maintain business regulation compliance.
So what did we find from this survey? We noted that 76% of business owners struggled with obtaining and renewing licenses and permits. One of the reasons for this struggle was excessive delays, as some businesses noticed that obtaining construction permits took over six months. Moreover, they also noticed a lack of efficiency, which required constant follow-ups in order to move forward with their permit applications. Some businesses noted that some city regulations and requirements were Some businesses noted that some city regulations and requirements were not well identified, which led to confusion and additional delays. Finally, inconsistent information from different city officials sometimes made it difficult for business owners to navigate these requirements efficiently. Overall, these issues led to delays in obtaining permits and led to a decrease in profits.
So here's what we hope to do in the future. We hope to work with Cupertino Permit Center to map out the entire permitting application and approval process in Cupertino so we can learn more about each and every step in the process and hopefully pinpoint exactly what it is that businesses seem to be struggling with. We are going to discuss with our chapter advisor, Mr. Hill, who has over 25 years of experience in consulting and has taken multiple clients through the process mapping and process improvement, and the Silicon Valley Central Chamber of Commerce, as well as research methods online that have implemented in different cities over the country. In conclusion, we hope to brainstorm and present our recommendations to the Cupertino Permit Center regarding potential ways we can streamline and optimize the permitting process in the city of Cupertino to benefit both local businesses as well as the city of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Munni Mari Patla, followed by Mr. Smith. And then we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Munni.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Munni Mari Patla, longtime resident of Cupertino. I also serve on the Bike Pod Commission, but I'm here representing myself as a resident. If I get a little animated, please bear with me as this topic is near and dear to me and our city is failing massively, the community, on this topic. If you don't know this already, for more than a month, there is a homeless encampment on the pedestrian walkway at the junction of De Anza and McClellan Road. I know many of my neighbors reported it using 311 application, and nothing has been done for more than a month. Before I go further, I want to share a small anecdote. I live in Cupertino and work in another Bay Area city. One of my colleagues from Canada visited our Bay Area office in November, and I met him again at our Alpharetta office. He casually asked, Munni, how do you compare, you know, the cities our offices are located in, Bay Area as well as, you know, here? I asked for his opinion as I might be biased because I'm from Bay Area, right? And he said, Munni, Alpharetta looks like a developed western city, and the Bay Area city looks like a third-world city. These are his comments. And I said, he said that because, I drove him a few times, you know, between our Bay Area office to his hotel where he saw quite a few RV encampments and homeless encampments. I'm afraid we have city employees admiring the problem instead of fixing the problem. I beg you to fire those problem admirers and hire the problem solvers. By employing these incapable employees, you are encouraging more homeless encampments in our city. I do not want to see someone saying Cupertino resembles a third-world country. That would be your biggest failure as an elected body. I would request you to do the following. Please enact strictest anti-homeless encampments and RV camping laws. If you don't have already, please put it on the agenda and act on it fast. Please hire the staff that can enforce these laws by relieving the ones that cannot do their jobs. Please remove this encampment at this junction as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Munni. Next, we have Mr. Smith. Okay, I think that person has left. So we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have Rhoda Frye, followed by San Ar, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome. Rhoda lowered, you lowered your hand, so I will move to San Ar, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and Vice Mayor Moore and council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only as a Cupertino resident, right? I'm deeply disappointed in the vote that occurred last council meeting where we saw approvals for fiscally irresponsible projects where federal grants are not to be expected, and yet council-approved TV projects that go upwards of $6 million, maybe as much as $11 million. And council-approved changes to Stevens Creek Boulevard in the midst of changes that have already occurred on De Anza that we are continuing to see degrading road conditions around. Council members, you were elected to represent us, the residents, not your pet projects. And several of you ran, most recently, on a campaign promise to represent residents, and you have let us down. And I ask you to please bring the items back on agenda and revisit the topic. We do not have $11 million to spend on TV projects, and we certainly can't continue to compromise our traffic conditions and continue to add congestion in the midst of adding thousands of new homes. I just drove on De Anza Boulevard right now, and the traffic intersection timings seem to have changed. There is no transparency around exactly what changes are occurring on our roads. We can get real-time notifications on permit applications. However, we get no way to know what changes are being planned by traffic engineering. It is unfathomable that one department and one individual has this much power over the roadways that affect the entire city. I ask you to please represent the residents that put their faith in you and voted for you. And it is not even four months since the election, and we seem to have been forgotten for pet projects that council members may have. Once again, I'm appealing to you to please put the item back on the agenda and terminate the contracts and look at fiscally responsible alternatives instead. In particular, intersection changes are the worst projects of all. Wolf intersection is telling us this is a proven failure, and repeating that mistake in concurrent manner without further testing at Blaney, at Stelling, at Mary, and at De Anza is going to be a colossal failure. I urge you to correct this mistake lest this become the legacy of this council and this mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Venkatesh Ranganathan, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Venkatesh.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. I am Venkatesh Ranganathan. I am a longtime resident of Cupertino. Today, I come before the council regarding the Wolf Road Housing Project. And it has been going on for a few months that we have been communicating with the city council and even the Wolf Road project also. Particularly, there was a workshop last week, and they talked about various aspects of the project. But as a resident living close to the perimeter road and the residents of the particular neighborhood, we are worried about or concerned about one aspect, which is the opening of the wall. Earlier, I got confirmation from the Rise project that they would not be doing anything with the wall. But the Wolf Road Council, they had, Wolf Road Housing, they had a requirement for a secondary emergency exit. But a week ago, I got a notification that they are working with the Paltrans, and that is the preferred method. And, but then in the workshop, there was outside influence of bike and pedestrians requiring an opening. So that doesn't, no, that is not right to override the concerns of those residents here and safety as well as other aspects of this opening. So I urge the council and also the Planning Commission to take care of, to do the neutral, to make sure that this doesn't happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Venkatesh. Now we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening. As I was looking for my unmute button earlier, I accidentally lowered my hand. So thank you for getting me back in again, City Clerk. So regarding Munni Mari Patla's comments, we had an emergency manager who was involved with homeless projects, who has since left the city and gotten a county job. And I don't see a job opening, and I'd like to know when there will be one. And because it's, public safety is important to residents. And what's going on there? Regarding, all I can say is stop government waste, and that would be pursuant to Mr. Rao's comments. You know, our plan is to be dipping into reserves at a rate of about $10 million a year. That's just not sustainable. I want you to consider, on average, we're around $27 million a year in sales tax revenue. We're projecting to get down to like nine or 10. We're not going to get it back, guys. We're not going to get that money back if we spend $10 million a year in reserves. It's ultimately going down to zero. We have to got, we have to stop spending. The other thing I want you to consider is we were close to around $9 million in hotel tax revenue, or TOT, also includes Airbnb's. And now we're around six. I mean, that was sort of the pre-COVID we were at that. Now, the other thing I want you to also consider is that with our property tax, Apple represents 25% of our property tax revenue. Apple has been lobbying to lower its, the value of its properties, which will lower our property taxes. So, look, we're not rolling in dough. And to that end, my ask of City Council is to lower the amount that staff can write a contract for to $50,000. We have got to stop the unchecked spending. You have this in an email. Now, there's a recent contract to validate our plastics rule, which is a great rule. But really, spending almost $100,000 when we don't have it is just not responsible. And, look, we just had some capable students up here. We could, they could do it. Maybe not as good a job as a $100,000 job, but it would be a pretty decent job. The last thing is regarding, there's an administrative hearing tomorrow regarding a property. You know what? They're going to get three parking spaces instead of four. But then that third parking spot, for some reason, blocks two car, two, both car bays for the garage door bays, which typically you'd only be blocking one. The reason, there's an antiquated power pole there with a hole down that's blocking way. Doesn't make sense. We want to have our zoning service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. Vice Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are now on to consent.
Vice Mayor, actually, sorry to interrupt. I see one council member has their hand raised on Zoom.
Pardon. I don't have insight into who that is. Will you please call them?
Councilmember Wong.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment to the FBLA students that are out there. If there's any help that they would like and assistance from a council member, I'm happy to volunteer with them. So that's all.
Great, excellent. So again, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And we are on to consent. Have there been any items pulled from consent?
No, Mayor. I mean, no Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Would the council wish to pull any items? I still see a hand raised from Commissioner, Councilmember Wong. Okay, the hand's been lowered. Seeing no requests, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments for the consent calendar at this time?
No, Vice Mayor, I see no, none, none.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fruein. And do I have a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Mohan. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember.
Again, this will not be with lights. Thank you.
Councilmember Fruein?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Our next item is public hearings. And we begin with item nine. The subject is the Zoning Map Amendment to Correct Zoning for Priority Housing Site Number 24 in the Sixth Cycle Housing Element. I am now opening the public hearing. Is there a staff presentation? And I see there is. Welcome.
Vice Mayor, good evening, City Councilmembers. Allow us one minute just to get it hooked up and set up, and we have a brief presentation for you. We'll be here for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like our presentation is up. So thank you, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, members of the City Council. We'll start off with what will be a brief presentation and just try to clarify why we're even here tonight. So as the title page showed, if you wouldn't mind going back just one second, that we're referring to this as a zoning correction because this refers back to the housing element rezoning that occurred in July of last year where there was an oversight on one site, which was site number 24 at 20865 McClellan Road. So we can walk you through what that is. Just one slide on the background of the housing element and how we got here. 10 months ago, April of last year, we received our long-awaited letter from HCD saying that the draft of our housing element that they were reviewing was compliant with state law contingent on having a rezoning of our priority housing sites occur. In May, one month later, the housing element was adopted by the City Council with the zoning changes occurring in July. So at that point in time, we had submitted everything to HCD to get certification. That occurred in early September, September 4th. So all 58 of our priority housing sites at that point had been rezoned for consistency with our housing element. I think, as you know, most of the sites are located along the busy corridors, Stevens Creek, De Anza, and Homestead. And a lot of them are higher-density sites with 50 or units or more per acre. There are several sites, the McClellan site being one of those, that is a lower-density site with 10 to 20 units per acre that is in a neighborhood. We've got several of these. And how we arrived at that was in our process in 2022 where we had numerous meetings with Planning Commission, Housing Commission, and City Council. There was a desire to spread sites throughout the city and make sure some were located on the west side. And also in talking to HCD with their affirmatively furthering fair housing policies, that also was encouraging sites to be spread throughout the city. So that's really how we got where we are with this site. This map here shows the site, which is on the upper right side, the pink site with the bold red line around that. It's a one-acre property, as you can see from the surrounding smaller yellow lots. It's predominantly a single-family neighborhood. You have the large blue area to the left that's in the center of the screen is the southern portion of De Anza College. And some of the purple or pink lots on the south side of McClellan are similarly multifamily sites that would allow 10 to 20 dwelling units per acre. So there are some other properties in the vicinity west of the site that are higher density than single-family. A little bit of background again on the zoning change we're asking tonight that involves what is the new Town Home Combining District. The city has historically used planned development zoning and still does. There's many sites throughout the city, particularly along the busier streets, that are zoned planned development CG rez, which was intended to give property owners and developers a lot of flexibility in how they develop their sites. Could be commercial, could be all residential, could be mixed-use. As housing laws have changed in recent years, there's been a great move towards objective standards. And that is something that HCD is wanting to see for a couple of reasons. They're clearer, you take discretion out of it, people can read them, understand what's expected, and it also can enable development to be streamlined. So as we were going through the housing element process, one thing HCD clearly did not want to have for our residential-only sites was planned development zoning. They wanted something that could be more streamlined once those sites were designated. So that's really how the Town Home Combining District came about. Now, that district is not a standalone district like an R3 or R4, which are other multifamily zones. It can be paired with either of those. As we did the housing element update, there were 14 sites in our residential-only district that were upzoned to R3, mostly from R1, as this site was. All of them were intended to have the Town Home Combining District. This site is the only one that did not. So, site number 24 on McClellan, as I just said, this is the only one of 14, if you look at our housing element, that does not have a TH along with the R3. The intention all along was that it would, as the other sites do. The text under the second bullet is probably. The text under the second bullet is probably going to be really hard for a lot of people to read, but this is taken straight from our housing element, where it says that the developer had made contact with the city going back to 2021 and has had a continued interest in doing townhome development. So this property owner had reached out to us, I believe in early 2022 formally, and had initially intended in doing a lower-density project of single-family homes, but had contacted us as part of the housing element update to be included as a townhome site, which I think, as we're all pretty familiar, is the residential development that is most in demand and most being pursued now. So, again, this is really what we're looking to correct to make sure we have consistency between what our housing element says and what our zoning says, because right now we don't have complete consistency. This item went to the Planning Commission on December 10th, so a little over two months ago. The action to add the TH combining district to R3 passed by a 3-2 vote. There were numerous speakers at that meeting that lived in the vicinity of the McClellan site. The majority of those speakers were dissatisfied that the site had been zoned, upzoned from R1 to R3. Not many of the comments were really focused on the townhome combining district that was at issue. I would think it's fair to say that most of the comments characterized that a multifamily or townhome development would be out of character with their surrounding single-family, could increase traffic or safety concerns, and there were some concerns about would the available utilities that are available be enough to accommodate a multifamily development. Environmental review, just to recap this, as I know you had all gone through our housing element process, the rezoning to get our housing element compliant with state law, as all actions with getting the housing element compliant was exempt from CEQA. And importantly, I think with the action tonight, this, the site is currently zoned R3. It is not zoned R1. So adding the townhome combining district does not alter the density of the site. It does not increase the potential of the units that could be built if it were R3 or R3TH. What this is really doing is enabling a particular type of housing, that being townhomes, to be built on the site. As part of our housing element update, when we added the combining district, there is a note in our zoning code that says townhomes are required to have the TH combining district in the R3 zone. So this is, again, just trying to get the housing element, which specifies townhomes as the likely type of development, and make that language consistent throughout the general plan, housing element, and zoning. Okay, so final slide. Staff recommendation, again, as I'd said, this is not about changing density or enabling more units to be built at the site. It's really the type of housing that would be allowed. We're really doing this solely for the insurance of consistency with the general plan and the housing element, and to allow townhome development that could proceed in the future as we had been contacted was likely to occur. Also, just want to say for housing priority sites, of which this is one, HCD is really expecting all cities to further the actions necessary to expedite housing development within the planning period, that being 2031. So based on that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution to, excuse me, an ordinance to correct what was really a zoning oversight that occurred in July, so that the 20865 McClellan Road site would have its zoning reflected as R3TH instead of just R3. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and Pugh and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Right. Thank you, Luke. Thank you for the presentation. We will first now go for council clarifying questions, each for five minutes, with rounds continued as needed in the order of Councilmember Fruein, Councilmember Mohan, myself, Councilmember Wong, and then Mayor Chow in order to simplify the question flow. So don't worry, we'll keep doing rounds until you get your questions answered. So we'll begin first with Councilmember Fruein.
Thank you for the presentation, Luke. How long has this site been in the housing element?
This, going back to when we started really our process, going through the Planning Commission in January, February 2022, this site's been on the list through all of that review. So commission review really occurred from, say, January to early July of 2022. City council had made final recommendations at the end of August of that year. This site has been on for all those iterations.
Okay. And in the course of that, how long has it been designated at roughly 20 dwelling units per acre?
I believe the entire time.
Okay, all right. I'm aware, and so are, I'm sure, many members of the public, and we've gotten a number of emails over time on this topic, that there is also a separate project application for the same site, correct?
Yes, there was, I believe, for four single-family homes.
No, but I mean at present.
Oh, excuse me, yes, there is since October of this year. Yes, there is an application on file.
Okay, and just for the sake of clarity, that is not the issue that is before us today?
No, this is agendized solely to correct a zoning error that occurred or should have occurred in July as part of the housing element update. The project is not here before us tonight.
Okay, so whether we vote yea or nay on this rezoning, that project is not the issue today. It does not impact that question.
Correct. It is purely a zoning action.
Okay, all right. The housing element and our zoning regulations have to be consistent as a matter of law, yes?
That is correct.
Okay. And our housing element was certified on the condition that we conducted the rezonings that we committed to in the housing element, yes?
Yes, the April letter of last year was very clear that until you complete the rezoning, you will not be certified.
Okay, so to me, what that says is that there's an argument that we haven't completed our rezonings here. I'll not put you in the difficult position of answering that question, but that's certainly something that's on my mind, and I will reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you, Councilmember Fruein. Next, we move to Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Moore. And thank you, Luke and Pugh, for the staff report. A question about the R3 designation. Since R3 is multifamily, why does, why does the townhouse have to have its own special designation? If we did, if we left it out, would the townhouse, could the townhouse designation be part of R3? Or is that a city separation?
Yeah, currently, right now, our zoning code says that for townhomes to be developed in R3, you need the TH overlay combined with it. So that is currently in our municipal code, and that was changed in July as part of the housing element update.
Okay, so that is something we did in our city?
Correct, yes. I mean, townhomes could be developed, I think, as I said, in like our planned development zoning district. So there's many non-housing element sites in the city where you could develop townhomes that have a planned development designation. Since this site is R3, you would need the TH combining to develop townhomes.
So if we didn't have the designation, could the developers go ahead and build townhouses?
I think there's a conflict with our code, and I think certainly with the intent of the language in the housing element that references townhomes. To have that reference and then have a code saying you need the TH district in conjunction with the R3, and then to not put the TH on the district, it could look as though you're not trying to enable townhomes to be built.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so it's my option to ask questions at this time. So I would like to clarify the difference between a townhome and a condominium. It's my understanding, and please correct me if things have changed over the years, that when you purchase a condominium, you're purchasing the airspace. And when you're purchasing a townhome, you also would be purchasing the land associated with that townhome. Is that correct?
I think it is, and there's probably a lot of definitions on these. The city, our definition for townhome pretty much says you don't have a unit above you. So it's more of a vertical home, usually three stories, parking beneath. But the city's code definition essentially says you can have neighbors on common walls on either side, not above. Whereas a condominium, you could have flats or stacked units on top of you. There are, I'm sure, definitions outside of Cupertino's that could blur the two.
Okay, so my next question is, can't you have a condominium where you're purchasing the airspace that looks just like a townhome?
You probably could, yes.
Yeah, just to be clarified, the definition in our code is more of a design standard rather than, than a regulation of the form of ownership.
Okay, thank you, because that was something that I used to do for work, was draw the condominium plans for the airspace that you would be purchasing. Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear, that you could have a condominium that, for all intents and purposes, looks just like the townhome. And what you're telling us is that the density for R3 is the same as the density for the R3TH. So you could, without having that provision that the land could be purchased, have a project that's condominiums, not TH, and that it looks exactly the same.
Right, R3 is a multifamily zoning district, and in Cupertino, the general plan sets the density. So that was changed in May of last year. Whether this is TH or just R3, it does not affect density at all on this site.
Okay, thank you. So next, we're moving on to Councilmember Wong.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and next, Mayor Chow.
Yeah, hello. So, so I know that a lot of developers prefer to build townhome, but with R3, it's more likely that we can support senior flat, which we really need right now, right? But right now, since we are allowing R3TH, we are discouraging senior flats that a lot of seniors can downsize to. That's intention of the housing element?
The housing element for this site recognized that townhomes were going to be the likely development based on the owner's comments to us when we were soliciting owner interest to be included as a housing element site.
Shouldn't the housing element be based on the city's need rather than the city needs? I find that our housing element is lacking incentive for starter homes, which is much smaller, 1,000 square foot, 1,500 square foot homes. No incentive for that, and no incentive for senior flats. Somehow, we are incentivizing townhomes simply because for developers, they feel this product is more sellable, but when we already have the market for that. So they are not really providing the unit type that we. Another question is parking requirement. Is there any difference in parking requirement between R3 and R3?
Through the Vice Mayor, through the Mayor, just really quickly clarifying Mayor's first question about the TH designation, how it might limit senior housing. It does not. It just typically, it just always does allow for the townhome product type. It does not restrict the type of development on site, and does not change the density. I think Luke can address the parking.
I'm sorry, I actually missed the parking question, but yeah, thank you for the clarification. Again, the townhome designation is solely for townhomes. If there's a parking question, I'm not sure I got that. I can say that the townhome requirement is one space per unit. And I believe multifamily, correct me if I'm wrong, Pugh, I believe it's one covered and one uncovered per unit? Just one? Okay, so parking standards are, townhomes multifamily are very similar. The development standards for R3 in townhomes are very similar as well.
Yeah, thank you. I think the point is if you allow the flexibility of TH, most people will develop what they feel would make the most profit. They would go for townhome rather than flats, which our community needs because we don't have many of them. So the restriction is sometimes the restriction for the benefit of the city. That's my point. And how about setback from neighbors? From the neighboring joining site? Is there any difference in terms of setbacks?
Setbacks are very similar. I could let Pugh speak to how precise those are. Maybe we can pull them up even. Okay, there, now I believe everybody can see them on the screen. So just a comparison on the left of an R3 project that would be five or more units, which with the TH combining district, again, TH is a combining district, so it often borrows from the base district, in this case, R3. So the front backs would be the same. Your interior side setbacks in R3 are 10 feet for the first floor, 12 feet for the second. You've got the TH combining district there on the right, where there's six feet for the first floor. And again, the street-side setbacks are identical at 12 feet. And I guess one thing, while we are not looking at a project, all of, all of what would be built on our housing element sites is going to be five units or more, which means they would be eligible for state density bonus. So it's, it's a fair assumption when there is a project that would be coming forward that you would have waivers and other things that would alter the setbacks, parking requirements, and so forth, which is very typical of all of our housing projects these days.
And if I may add, on the second floor and above for the TH, the setbacks are actually set to be a little bit higher if the, if the project is one story higher than whatever is next to it. So it's 12 feet for R3, but it's about 16 feet if you are a TH. So it gives you a little bit more setback, but as Luke pointed out, with density bonus waivers, we have no control over those.
And I guess the other thing to note is both zoning districts have the same height requirement of 30 feet maximum.
Okay, that's good to know. So actually, the TH has a higher setback for the second floor? If they don't apply waiver?
Correct.
First, yeah. And then there is actually parking requirement for this R3 site? Because I kind of remember the, in the rezoning ordinance, the parking requirement was removed for some R3 sites?
No, I don't believe that's the case. Again, you could have a reduction in parking through density bonus law, but anything that were proposed on this property would need to address city parking requirements.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Chow. We're going to go for another round of questions. Councilmember Fruein?
So you partially answered one of the questions that I was going to get to, which was, is this, you know, TH standard requirement something that could be waived by the density bonus law or that's a developer could ask for an economic concession on anyway? I would assume that that's probably the case. I will note, though, that the very same section of the government code that requires a city to keep its general plan and zoning regulations consistent with each other, which is Government Code Section 65860, also authorizes a private right of action to force the city to make them consistent, meaning that we could be sued as a city by the developer to force the rezoning anyway. And that seems like a rather significant waste of taxpayer money to me. I don't know that I have a whole lot of other questions for you at this time, and I will thank you very much for a very coherent set of explanations. Thank you.
Councilmember Mohan?
I have no questions.
Thank you. And would you happen to know if there's some intention on the developer's part to be using density bonus? And what would qualify for a density bonus for, for this site?
I don't know about the specific project. I'm just saying that since density bonus law applies to anything of five units or more, this is a one-acre site at 10 to 20 units per acre. In the few years I've worked here, I haven't seen any project that qualifies based on the number of units for density bonus law that hasn't used it. It would be very, very likely I very, very likely, I would say, all of our housing element sites are probably going to use density bonus.
Okay, so they're looking for the townhome designation where you purchase the land. I would assume that these are then for sale units they're anticipating?
Townhome units would be for sale, correct.
Okay, so would they need to provide 20% of those affordable to moderate income?
That is correct. You would have to do 20% minimum moderate income for owner occupied. If it were rental, it would be 15%, but it would be lower income.
Okay, so, but the presumption is that it's probably going to be for sale. So you've had 27 units, 20% of those to moderates for a family of four. That's about 184,000, I believe?
If I may, it's about an acre with a maximum density of 20 dwellings to the acre, so it'd be 20% of the 20.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the feasibility of going with the, how they would get to the density bonus. And it's, in your estimation, would you say that's a tough hurdle for them to meet or not?
I don't know that I can speculate on that, but most projects, meeting density bonus is not very difficult.
Yeah, especially when it's moderate. So if you, if they use density bonus law, what sorts of waivers could they do? Because I saw that there was some difference between the R3 and the TH designation for setbacks, TH having a greater setback for the second floor. Can they then not follow the, even the ground floor or the second floor requirement? And to what extent can they waive that?
Yes, I mean, I guess I would just, I would just encourage council to avoid sort of speculating about waivers for hypothetical projects. I can say that, you know, the standard for, you know, the case law that's fleshed out as to when a density bonus waiver is allowed, you know, basically says that waivers must be granted to allow the project at the density that is permitted at the density bonus law in the manner in which the project is designed.
Right.
And so that leaves very little flexibility for local jurisdictions to change the design through a discretionary review process.
Well stated, and that's essentially where I was trying to head. So with that, I'll move on to Councilmember Wong.
I only have one comment. I know we're subject to 65860 and the minutes will code, and that's kind of our challenge, but it's, yeah, I've no other comments to add. Thank you.
Mayor Chow?
No question.
Okay, thank you. Now we are going to go on to public comments. Madam City Clerk, are there any speaker cards for public comments on this item?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have four requests to speak, which would bring us to 12 minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Ken Bell, followed by Daniel Ying, followed by Yvonne Thorstensen, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Ken.
Hi. Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members, city team, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Bell. I'm a resident of Cupertino for 20 years. I'm on McClellan Road where I'm block lead and neighborhood watch coordinator. I want to go on record that I oppose this R3, R3H development, like I did at the planning commission meeting back in December. So I know this is part of the housing element, but I'm asking that you downzone this and upzone elsewhere. And I've organized several meetings at my house, and I believe I'm echoing concerns of the residents on or near McClellan Road. I understand you're reviewing a clerical error, but I ask that you review this again and downzone if possible, and let us know either way, so we can review and check what our next course of action might be. So we've talked about some of the reasons why we think that you can downzone this, that the site was originally zoned R1, of course, and the developer met with neighbors and discussed the plan to build four single-family homes. And it kind of fell off at that point, and it never really came back to these neighbors. They were never told that this was going to be an R3 or an R3TH site, and everybody was kind of caught off guard. Everybody's busy. They weren't watching housing element work and so forth. And later, there was discussion, evidently, between the parties, the developer and the city, and this somehow got upzoned R3 without notifying residents again. So McClellan's narrowed. You've seen it. It's narrowed because of the bike lanes we have there. We think the townhome project's just going to create a mess and create more traffic. We had another accident last week on McClellan Road at West Acres intersection where someone was hit by a car on a bicycle. Emergency vehicles came out. The block between Deans and Stelling is single-family homes. I mean, you saw on that map, this thing is dead right in the middle of that. So what I'm asking here is can the city council tell us, one way or the other, that you will support us to downsize or downzone the site by directing city planning and the developer to work together to explore the R1 option or not? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next, we have Daniel Ying, followed by Yvonne Thorstensen, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. For Honorable Mayor and City Council and my fellow community members, I appreciate this chance for me to speak. I do want to take this chance to also express my opposition to this new development in McClellan area, the 27 unit, and then the zoning plan itself to R3TH, R3 even, right? Our expressed hope is that, we're hoping is if you can, you know, looking into exploring downzone it, and then also, you know, maybe, yes, for housing element and all that, you know, explore that in the business section of the town, so that our area within McClellan, it's consistent zoning, instead of just one townhome, the rest is still, you know, single family. And then, as I was talking about this, right, I just realized, you know, the same situation happened to me personally, right? When, so all of a sudden, you know, this whole thing changed. When last time when we did the bike lane, right, you added a turn lane and a bike lane. And I'm actually directly impacted because my house is on the intersection. So without anybody telling me, all of a sudden, I came in one day, I see they dug up the easement, and then they actually damaged my bushes. And then, so all of a sudden, the road has been cut into my property. And then I looked into my property. Okay, there's a 10-feet easement. That's a public setback. So that means you can, maybe you have the right to cut it. But I'm thinking, looking at this, is after that setback and cut, there's no more public setback and no more public easement, right? So from this point onwards, if you start to expand McClellan into a one lane or two lane, and you have another turn lane cut into back into, that will be into my public property, and I will definitely be doing legal challenges to that. And I will not be giving up that, any, even a foot of that space. Public property is public property. So this is all of a sudden, I'm just looking at that. It come up to me today. I'm thinking, as you guys are talking about it, wait a minute, this directly impacted me, and it will impact us, right? So this is why I'm thinking is, in the future, we request and welcome, like, you know, participation and then discussion with the planners and the city officials, so that our concerns can be heard, and then we can be part of that development planning. So then, you know, our life can be, you know, we're aligned in the community, we're aligned with our officials. So that way, you know, everybody can be on a good footing, and everybody can be good faith to each other. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Daniel. Next, we have Yvonne Thorstensen, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Yvonne.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Moore and council members, Mayor Chow, and thanks for giving me a moment to say a few words to, and thank you for the very informative presentation. It made it very clear that this is a very, very simple question. Do we fix this oversight in the designation for this one housing site, and so we can move forward onto other more pressing issues? So I do, I would just like to say, ask the council to please approve this, this amendment, this zoning map amendment, and move it from the R3 to the R3TH, so that it can be designated the way that it was intended. To continue debating this amendment for whether the zoning, to change the zoning designation is confusing to the public, and I think we should just pass it and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin. And there is one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I know this is a very difficult topic. I did attend all of the housing element meetings, all the site selections for the last two to three years. It has been, the burden that has been put on Cupertino by the state, by HCD for the sixth cycle is different than the fifth cycle. I'm sorry that this property was, is providing a zoning issue, but then again, the city was tasked with passing the housing element under the direction of HCD. We wanted our certification, and that's what everyone did. They tried to do in the last two to three years. But I, as a member of the public, have great concerns about this site being zoned this way, because right now, the state is running an audit of the sixth cycle housing element with 10 cities being considered. And one of the questions is, are the RENA numbers? The RENA numbers are bogus. They're probably off by 50%. And in my mind, the city does not need this property to qualify the RENA numbers. And I'm saying this as someone who has been a bystander, who has spent time doing their due diligence, attending meetings on Zoom during COVID, trying to do what the state wanted. But it has become clear that the RENA numbers are off by 50%. The RENA, HCD required 4,588 units. It is probably closer to 2,000. So if this site is even not rezoned for high density, it's no great loss. We have 2,000 that we can set back on. And I'm saying this because I am concerned about the seventh cycle coming up and what the audit is going to find. Remember, our state is spending money. Senator Glazer asked. Senator Cortese voted upon this for the audit. There is reason to suspect there are strange things that happen. I will stop there, but even if you decide not to rezone this property, it is no great loss. HCD can't come after us because their numbers are off by 50%. I will say, we do need senior housing. I would like to see more senior apartments put in. They might be able, if they're able to do four to six, if this is an acre, they could do four to eight homes. Why not have senior homes there? I know in my family that we need that because we have seniors that need housing. I know that. So let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. That is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
I'd like to concur with the comments made by Jennifer Griffin. You know, going backwards, I know we should think forwards, but I'm going to go backwards for a moment. You know, the site was kind of considered for housing element, and the expectation is that it would have returned back to the planning commission for a deep dive. And in 2023, there were only six meetings of the planning commission. And, you know, we just, due diligence didn't happen. But at the end of the day, I wonder, and I hope that planners could make comments, staff planners could make comment on this, is whether it would have made a difference? You know, if this had been brought to the public, and it should have, would it have been made a difference? The developer asked for a certain amount of density, and would any neighborhood concerns have been taken into account? Yes or no? The second question I would also have is, on the plan, the driveway appears to be a half of a cul-de-sac at the end. It kind of looks like, a little bit like a P. And in looking at it, to me, it looks like the other side of the P in the future could be filled out on Tula Court. So if you do have more density on this project, how does that affect the project next door? I realize this isn't 100% in alignment with what this agenda item is, but hopefully, it's adjacent enough to discuss it. Also concerned about potentially blocking solar from neighbors. Perhaps accommodations could be made to have an underground garage so that we don't have as many privacy concerns. Now, I did write in on this, I mean, years ago, a project would come to city council, and it was all about, not about the needs of the developer or the needs of the property owner that wanted to develop. It was all about the neighbors. It was all about, does that neighbor retain their privacy? Should we plant some kind of, you know, a tree? Or should there be windows that you cannot see through? Because if you have a window on the second story, you'd be looking down into the neighbors' or the balconies, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing that I would ask, and this also goes for other projects, is just really to put it out to the developer. Obviously, you can't require things, but to be able to set the designs so that there could be an elevator in mind. Now, there are relatively inexpensive elevators, and so if you have an opportunity to have something, a shaft that's available for an elevator, then you would be able to accommodate more senior-oriented housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Vice Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. We're now going to close the public hearing. Are there any further questions from any members of the council? Please raise your hand. At that point, I'll need to reopen the hearing. But are there any further questions for staff? See a hand raised from Councilmember Wong. So I'm reopening the public hearing.
No questions, just comments. Sorry.
Pardon. So we're looking just for questions. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. And if you have some comments, please do that. But I'd like to first have a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve staff's recommendations, even though that's not where I'm headed. But that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Councilmember Mohan seconds?
May I make some comments?
Yes, please. Councilmember Wong.
So while this may appear to be a simple technicality, I will be voting no, mostly because the previous council failed to solicit proper input from the residents and chose to bypass the planning commission and had members who worked on behalf of HCD and the developers instead of the residents. That's a huge issue. The HCD numbers may be proven to be wrong later, and that's fine. We don't have a ground to stand on there. But we did not make an effort to downzone under SB 330 by finding other properties to upzone, especially in such a critical area. We have a duty to our residents. That's why they're here today. That's why they're mad. That's why they're angry. And the reason I'm excited is because they have every right to be. And if I was living in that neighborhood, I would also want to use this opportunity with this technicality to be able to find a way to downzone this property. But that's where I stand, and I may be in the minority. But I wanted to make that point, and I wanted to know the residents, that I do hear them, and we should all be listening to them, especially going forward in planning commission and planning decisions, without bypassing their input, without trying to push things through. This has been happening with the bike lanes. This has been happening with the lane road diets, and people are mad. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We prefer that we don't have clapping during the meetings so that people who have other opinions feel welcome to speak. So please refrain from applause during these items. So are there any other council members who would like to make a comment? Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mohan?
I just wanted to reiterate and remind ourselves and everyone else that this is not a debate about the details contained in the Housing Element. The HCD has certified the Housing Element and we must comply with the regulations if we want to keep our certification. This is a typo and as, and as has been explained frequently in several instances, it's an inadvertent clerical error. Not correcting it would result in a mismatch between zoning ordinances and the general plan. And in the worst case scenario, it could jeopardize our certification. So having heard everyone's concerns and opposition to, to this plan, it still doesn't make a difference in the sense that all we are being asked today is to correct the typographical error and approve this item. And I will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Chow.
Yeah. So here's a comment. I think the community wishes to be rezoned to R1 or at least to four, four units rather than 20 some units. I think we, yes, it's, we have to look at how we got here. The city planning should be about what the city needs, not about what the developer needs. But back in August 30th, 2020, yes, this site has been on the housing inventory list. And at that meeting, we had one slide for, for every site to clearly identify what sites were included and what they were zoned for. And, and at that time, the City Council did identify an initial inventory list that was never going to be the final list. And this kind of zoning map never, ever appeared on the council agenda or any staff presentation ever since this meeting. Ever since this meeting, any council item site has become one column in a very hard-to-read spreadsheet. And therefore, it's almost impossible for any community member to even find out whether their neighborhood is going to be impacted by the Housing Element site. And I would like to remember that, everyone to remember, back in 2014, when we adopted the last Housing Element, the council identified 19 sites in the inventory and did the environmental study. And then in the final adoption for the Housing Element, they adopted only five sites to just meet the 1064 unit of RENA. So they don't, you don't overzone because you overzone, that binds your hand in your next Housing Element. But for Cupertino, from January 2026, a new council majority was elected, the Housing Element was never put on the council agenda to review for the site inventory at all. And in the final May 2024 Housing Element, it's like all the sites were adopted and we, the, the group that had been advocating for aggressive Housing Element have been quiet the entire time, which means I think they got everything they wanted. We adopted the most aggressive Housing Element. We, our RENA requirement is 45,088, but we adopted almost 1,300 units more than required. And then beyond that, that's 28% more than the units required. Beyond that, we undercounted the units that we could have adopted, accommodated from the pipeline project, which are the projects that we have approved. And we undercounted the units we could have accommodated in the mixed-use sites along Stevens Creek. So we undercounted, I think about 1,300 units more. So we overcounted 1,300, we undercounted 1,300. So then, it's a good question. Do we really need this site to meet the Housing Element? Likely not. But at this point, I understand with all the mistake that has been made, it's, the state law has had our hands. Even if we rezoned this site to R1, I believe the developer likely has submitted our SB 330 for the parts for the site, so they have locked in the current zoning. So the state has adopted this research, research that allow a developer to lock in zoning with only preliminary application. That was only adopted in 2019, never before. And the state has taken away a lot of the control of the city and the residents. So I will have to approve this zoning map today, but I would like to restate my objection to a lot of this aggressive state laws, outrageous RENA requirement, which is really destroying a lot of our local control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Fuin.
Just a few brief comments. I think I made my position clear through the line of questioning that I think that we are at significant risk of litigation, either directly from the developer if we don't engage in the rezoning that we are required to do, or from HCD or an outside third party if we don't actually make our commitment that we've already given to HCD through the enactment of the Housing Element clear. I will also correct some misinformation that was provided moments ago. We did, in fact, review the sites inventory. We reviewed the sites inventory when we had our first discussion of the policies that we would be adopting as part of the Housing Element. That was July the 15th roughly of 2023. And in the course of that, we actually had to have more sites than what we originally had submitted to HCD. In my own conversations with HCD, in order to try to get an idea of exactly what we could do and what we couldn't do, it was very clear from their perspective that we were not meeting our, our standards. We were not going to make the, the number of units that we needed to unless we increased the number of sites. So I don't see how anyone can reasonably say that we can just drop a site at this stage, or how that was even possible in 2023. If we want to engage in examining what could be done in the way of, of downzoning, we also learned earlier on in the course of, of discussion on the same topic for a different site in roughly October, November of last year, that we would have to ask for HCD's permission to do that because it is a Housing Element site. So there is a great deal of process that we would have to engage in in order to get to that point. I do want to thank the people who came out today. It tells me that we didn't do enough in the course of engagement over many years in terms of deciding which site should be part of the Housing Element and what the neighbors are going to want. And I would encourage you to support a work program item that I've asked for that examines what sorts of outreach we need to do in the course of the next Housing Element cycle so that we don't make the same kinds of mistakes and there aren't people who are surprised later on when a project comes forward at a density they weren't expecting. Thank you.
I do see Mayor Chow's hand is raised. Did you have some further comments?
Yes, I'd like to correct the information. The only time the housing policies were on the agenda was in the July study session of 2023, and that was only on the housing policies. The Housing Element site was not on the agenda, you can double check that. And if there were any discussion on Housing Element site with HCD or anyone, it wasn't on the council agenda. Maybe Councilmember Fuin had some private conversation, which is with HCD, but the council was never engaged in such discussion and was never given the choice to select the more or less Housing Element site. That choice was taken out of the council's.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I have a question for the city attorney. Do we, is, is it reasonable to anticipate that we could face litigation from either the developer, HCD, or an outside third party? Should we not correct what may be an inconsistency?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speculate too much on the risk of litigation. I do think it was pointed out that there is, there is an inconsistency between our general plan and our zoning ordinance now. And, and the government code does require the, the general plan and zoning ordinance to be consistent. So as long as that inconsistency remains, that's, 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 you know, an obvious, you know, variance in our compliance with the government code, that we could remove that risk by, by correcting this error this evening. As far as other risks of litigation, I mean, there's certainly possibilities, I just wouldn't want to speculate on them too much at this point.
Okay. And, and with regards to the inconsistency, that was something that we saw starting in 2018 with the Valco SB 35 project. That was one of the issues there, inconsistency.
Right.
Okay. And would you say that it's accurate that our rezoning could be characterized as being incomplete at this time?
I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't go that far given, you know, the limited technical nature of, of this, this, of this, you know, need for correction. I certainly wouldn't go far to say that we didn't complete the rezoning required to, to have our Housing Element certified. But I do think that there is a variance between our, our general plan and our zoning ordinance and, and the purpose of this item is to, is to correct that variance.
Okay, thank you. And I really appreciate the comments from all of my fellow council members and in particular, the, the vast history that Mayor Chow was, was sharing with us. And there, there indeed may be places with regards to outreach that can be corrected in the future through various changes that are made. And I do see that there's a hand raised from Councilmember Fuin. Councilmember Fuin.
Yes, I just wanted to note for the record that the minutes of the council meeting of the 25th of July of 2023 do state very specifically in the motion that passed that with respect to the site inventory, that staff revised the draft site inventory to include all Tier One and Tier Two sites and revise their proposed densities. Those were things we actually did discuss. We discussed them in a number of different contexts, in particular with regard to the effect of AB 2011, but we did have that discussion, we did discuss sites. There was an opportunity there.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuin. One other point is, we have looked into downzoning some other sites as mentioned by Councilmember Fuin, and I believe the city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's an informational memo that's available that talks about the difficulties of downzoning should that be attempted, but downzoning the site is not the order of business for this evening.
That's correct. You know, if, if council, you know, wished to explore downzoning, I think that would require a future agenda item. I would say that there, you know, you know, as that memo lays out, there would be some obstacles to downzoning, including the potential for any vested rights for a project on the site that would defeat any attempt to downzone the site, you know, as well as, as of course, the need to, to make sure that our Housing Element continues to be certified by HCD.
Okay, thank you. And I hope that everyone understands what it means if a developer chooses to use density bonus law. We've seen that at the Valco SB 35 site, Westport, other locations. And so that you would be eligible for waivers and concessions and it is not that difficult to get that. You can waive setbacks, height requirements and the like. So I will now, if there are no further comments or questions, request that... Oh, we do have a hand raised. Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to move the question through the chair.
Thank you. So Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Fuin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
No. Nay.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries with Wong voting no.
Our next item is our action calendar. Action item 10. The subject is the Tyler New World Enterprise Resource Planning ERP replacement, which is continued from the February 4th, 2025 City Council meeting. Is there a staff presentation?
Through the chair real quick. I, I need to take a bio break. I wonder if I could call for a bio break. Sorry.
Pardon. So we will take a five-minute recess and then come back. So it's 8:32, we'll be back at 8:37. Thank you.
8:32, 8:37, 8:32, 8:37. Skin thinks me.
Okay, everyone's returned. And again, we're on action item number 10. The subject is the Tyler New World Enterprise Resource Planning ERP replacement, continued from the February 4th, 2025 City Council meeting. And is there a staff presentation or some information for us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So good evening, Mayor Chow and Vice Mayor Moore and council members. Thank you for hearing the ERP replacement item once again. To assist with the discussion, I also have with me Brian Pessi and Mike Raphael from Plant Moran, the consultants that completed Cupertino's ERP Needs Assessment. The Needs Assessment is attached to the supplemental report, just to note that. Plant Moran is a leader in public sector ERP consulting, possessing extensive expertise in guiding local governments through the financial intricacies of ERP implementations. Their comprehensive approach includes conducting thorough cost analysis to ensure that proposed expenses align with the market standards. Their clients are nationwide, but in our area consist of Daly City, Milpitas, Concord, the County of Marin, San Mateo, Pomona, Petaluma, South San Francisco, and Palo Alto. Before we get started with your questions, I want to give a, a quick background and timeline. So the ERP replacement project was approved by council as a budget request for fiscal year '22. Shortly after thereafter, Cupertino selected Plant Moran to conduct the Needs Assessment as well as the ERP preparation and vendor selection assistance and implementation project management services. July of 2023, ERP Needs Assessment was completed. That was less than three years ago, but still exactly what we are experiencing today with the system. Again, that's in the supplemental report. So just following that completion, the city was faced with our budget shortfall and any additional ERP replacement work was postponed. This item came back to council November 24, just four months ago, as part of the one-time fund allocation plan. Council decided to wait until a newly elected member, Councilmember Wong, was present. January 22nd, a month ago, we held an ERP replacement closed session council meeting. This is where we covered all of the system's shortcomings. At that time, council unanimously agreed on moving forward with the ERP replacement was the best move for the city. Unfortunately, the system, the issues with our current ERP system remain and are only magnified over time. Unfortunately, the system, the issues with our current ERP system remain and are only magnified over time. Given the process for a local municipality to select, procure, and implement a new ERP system typically spans 24 to 36 months, thus making it crucial for the city to initiate the process without delay. I can't stress this point enough. So the timeline. So here, we're asking you to approve the budget allocation. If you do approve, then we do start the RFP preparation and vendor selection. That process takes approximately eight months. We would come back to council no later or no earlier than November of '25 for, for contract approval. Once we have the approval, we start the implementation process, which takes about 24 months. That brings us approximately to the beginning of 2028. So ERP implementation projects have been nicknamed early retirement plans for a reason. The stats show ERP implementations fail 50% of the time, often resulting in loss of valuable staff, as experienced by other cities. Cupertino would not be pushing to go through this process unless it was absolutely necessary. To mitigate these risks, we partnered with Plant Moran, experts in ERP implementation for local governments, to ensure a smooth and successful rollout. Their expertise helps us navigate the process correctly and address all critical project elements needed for success. The ERP replacement project was on consent last council meeting, November, or February 4th. Since that time, we have answered over 40 supplemental questions. And speaking of supplemental questions, I do have a couple additional questions sent by Mayor Chow today. So I'll go through those. The first one was, what are the components we will be evaluating in the new ERP system? So the core components that, that are required for a new system are as follows. For our finance, this includes accounts payable, accounts receivable, and miscellaneous billing, bank reconciliation, budgeting, fixed assets, general ledger, grant and project accounting, that would include CIP budget accounting, payroll, purchasing, and time entry. For human resources, again, the required core items are employee benefits, employee self-service, personnel actions, and position control. It does also include expanded scope or optional items. These for finance include contract management. And then for HR, they include learning management, performance management, recruitment, onboarding, and offboarding. So the city requires that a vendor respond to all of the core scope, but can respond to some or all or none of the expanded scope or the optional in their response. The optional items are ones we currently have standalone systems for. So contract management, we have cobblestone, and that is approximately $40,000 a year. For learning management, we spend approximately $10,000 a year. For recruitment, onboarding, and offboarding, that application is approximately $26,000 a year, totaling $75,000. The last question was a follow-up. So what's the difference in terms of functionality between high-end Tier Two and low-end Tier Two systems? Particularly, why is it, it doubled or tripled? What's the justification in cost? So for that answer, I will pass it over to Brian to answer that question.
Thank you. And, and the one point of clarification I want to make in terms of the range of low end to high end Tier, Tier Two systems is that it doesn't necessarily indicate that a different system is a low end versus a high end. It's a range of costs being low end to high end. So you could see that the same system in some instances is on the low end of the cost range, and in other instances is on the high end of the cost range, based on the level of services procured or the number, number of modules that were.
Vice Mayor, I apologize for the interruption, but Councilmember Wong has not returned from the recess virtually. He's not participating, so I wanted to defer to the city attorney whether or not we must stop the proceedings.
City Attorney?
No, there's, there's no, no requirement to stop the proceedings. I would just note Councilmember Wong's absence for the minutes.
Apologize.
That's right. Thank you. So I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that the low end and the high end of Tier Two that we're discussing refers to the cost. So if you purchase, for example, those different optional or expanded modules, that could push the solution to be on the higher end of the cost range. Or the same solution could be on the lower end if you purchase fewer services or fewer modules or products. So if you only stick to the core or required products. However, there also are systems that tend to be more expensive or less expensive and land them on the higher or lower end of the, the range. Some of that can be due to a need to discount based on a level of experience in the public sector. So more established players don't have as strong of a need to discount and break into the market. And then there's also some variation in the complexity that different products offer. So the, the products that can support more complex processes or need to be configured to support more complex processes can land on the higher end of that range. Whereas the, the simpler ones or the ones that can't support as complex of processes would be on the lower end. And then, like I was saying before, the, the scope of services that's purchased or, you know, the work effort split between the city and the selected solution provider could also increase or decrease that cost, pushing you towards the high or low end of that range.
Okay. So with that, that concludes our, my presentation, and I'll pass it to council for any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you for the presentation and the clarification so far. First, we're going to go for council clarifying questions. We'll begin in the same order that we did before, each having five minutes. And we'll go for further rounds as necessary. So we'll begin with Councilmember Fruin. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, my question is really fairly simple, and you've answered it in one of the supplementals, but I just wanted to raise the issue. Since the number of, of members of the public have discussed the, the total price tag on this item, that the purpose of, of the larger number is to allow us a, a greater range of responsive bids so that we can have the freedom to pick something that is well-adapted to us. Is that an accurate description of the reason?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Okay, all right. And I'll reserve my time then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Had a question for the consultants. The need, the needs assessment was completed in 2023. And as you rightly pointed out, it's been a couple of years since. Is there, is it current? Is there a need to update it or amend it before the RFP is issued?
Yeah, so we've allocated some time as part of starting the process back up to check in with the different stakeholders that we interviewed earlier and identify if there have been any significant changes to systems or processes or policies that would impact either the needs or, you know, requirements for a new system as we begin. And then we would make any appropriate updates to the RFP selection criteria, which would include things like functionality, implementation approach, cost, and so on, and make sure that that, that meets the current needs of the city.
Okay, so you would make some changes?
We would, yeah, we would evaluate if there's a need to make changes by having further discussions. And if so, we would make any necessary changes.
Okay.
Mayor? You know, I, I don't see Councilmember Wong joining the meeting again. And I, I guess I'm having a concern that the, the ability of the public to access the remote location may be, and make comments at the location may be impaired.
What's the remedy?
I, I think, I think having him rejoin the meeting before we proceed would be the, the best course.
So try, attempt to contact him?
Yes.
Okay. Can that be done through the city clerk?
Yes, I have made an attempt, so I will continue.
Okay. Do we want to pause on, take a pause on the meeting for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, just out of abundance of caution, I think that's the best course.
Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and hopefully Councilmember Wong will re-join the meeting. It's 8:53. We'll resume at 8:58. We're continuing on with our clarifying questions. I believe we were receiving questions from Councilmember Mohan. Do you have any further questions?
Yes, I, I had two questions, and you answered one, which was the need to update the needs assessment document. My second question is about the payment. Is, is there a schedule? Do we have to give? It's an expensive item, so how does that work? Do we pay upfront? Do we, is there a schedule?
Yep, there's, there's two main components. So the first is going to be the implementation cost, the one-time cost. And there's a variety of ways that, that vendors will propose invoicing the, the city for that and city payment. And that, that is something that can be negotiated. It's frequently either invoiced as it's completed. So they would, you know, either come out for a, a series of, of implementation sessions and send an invoice following that. Or there could be milestone-based payments where you, you meet a specific milestone in the project. So completion of a certain testing milestone or what have you. And then there's a certain payment allocated to that milestone, again, which, which can be negotiated, the percentages. The second piece would be the ongoing cost, the subscription cost. And so most frequently, if not always nowadays, the subscription costs are, begin when you start the implementation process and they provision the environments for you to begin implementing. And those costs would either be annual or quarterly most common, commonly. And you would pay those throughout the, the life of however long you subscribe to the product.
Okay, thank you. So the payment schedule is another factor you would consider when you review your RFPs?
Yep, certainly. And, and it would be something else that comes up as we negotiate a contract and statement of work.
Great. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So are we allowed to be asking that we'd like to see all of the optional items when you do the RFP? How is that going to be decided? Because I, they, they looked great. I would like to see all of it. How does that get decided?
Yes, so what, as was described earlier, we'll, we'll list out, these are the core or required components. These are the optional or expanded components. And the, the vendors can then propose whatever they think would be the best fit for the city. And at that point, we can evaluate, and we would go through the evaluation process. And based on what we learn, we would then communicate with the different vendors that, you know, based on what we've seen, we would either like to include or exclude this. And there's usually a, a return on investment discussion once, once we go through that process.
Okay, thank you. And then there was, like, for finance, there was a mention of contract management. And then there were several components for HR. Were those, were those requests from our finance and HR department?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So, you know, I for one really appreciate the contract management request. Now, with regards to Tier One and Tier Two, if I understood this analysis correctly, Tier One is, those are companies that essentially work for the private and the public sector. Tier Two is strictly in the public sector. I, I wasn't particularly clear on whether or not you're going to be looking at Tier One. You know, I'm seeing high Tier One, but could you kind of summarize if you were able to look at something from Tier One and Tier Two, or just one or the other? I wasn't really sure what, what the plan is.
Yeah, and so in the last decade, I think I've been involved in something like 30 different software selections for ERP projects. And I haven't seen an instance where we've asked the market to limit responses based on a specific tier. So what we typically do is define the requirements, both at the high level that was already discussed and at a very detailed level, right? We have hundreds of, of specific software requirements. And then the, the marketplace will respond if they think they'd be a good potential fit for the city. So if someone, you know, if a vendor doesn't think that they're going to be the appropriate fit, they wouldn't propose. But it's typically not limited based on the, the tier.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank you for all, answering all the questions. And this is, the report was very straightforward to go through, and so I appreciate that. So next, we're moving on to Councilmember Wong. And then, then we'll go to Mayor Chow, and we go through another round of questions after that. Okay? Councilmember Wong.
Thank you for taking the time to put together the requirements document as well as the proposal. As you may know, in any kind of vendor selection, the biggest challenge is really existing processes versus future processes and future state. There's been a lot of staff turnover in the last few, let's say, years, and expertise has changed. And since the original needs assessment was done three years ago, what are the gaps that you see at the moment for where we are in the current state to going to the future state? In terms of business processes and the processes that are in place, and of course, future modules that we'll need?
So are you asking for what the gap is from when we did the needs and not, needs assessment in '23 versus now?
Yeah, is there, is there a big gap? Is there any additional things that we have to map or define?
No, I think it's very, a very small amount. I mean, I think it makes sense to go back to each group and have that conversation with them. But by no means is it going to be a complete new needs assessment. It's going to be relatively straightforward. All of the, the issues or shortcomings in the system remain. Those haven't changed. There could be some new requirements that have come up in the last couple of years. And that's what we will discover when we do our interviews moving forward.
Okay. And one of the biggest challenges is really during implementation. Implementation costs tend to be sometimes two to three times the cost of the actual software license. And in this case, it's a SaaS and subscription model. Because it's a SaaS and subscription model, as you, as you do the progression in terms of the requirements and the RFPs as they come back, would it be possible to put into the scheduling flex up and flex down provisions? And what I mean by that is, for example, if we have 100 employees, we achieve it at a certain discount. At 80, you have a certain discount, depending what the metric is, to have a volumetric kind of approach. So you can flex up as you add capacity and you flex down as you drop capacity to include that somewhere into the RFP.
Yep, we could certainly include a request for that in the RFP. It's a very common component of our contract negotiations process. We typically do see the, the flex up component proposed as a part of the initial contract terms. And then we, as you can imagine, then need to oftentimes negotiate the flex down or a lower starting point or floor for the vendors to, to begin at, to give us some ability to flex down.
Yes, they usually do, they usually do not like the flex down, as you know, in, in New World. So we do see that. Okay. And then the last question, really, when you look at the city at this current state, do we, are we using this as an opportunity to take advantage of best practices that are along with other municipalities as part of that implementation? And is the change management being put, built into the budget here for the investment?
So yes, very much the city is taking advantage of opportunities to identify and, and discuss process improvements. As part of the report, there is a number of very detailed opportunities for process improvement. And then within the associated documents, there is a spreadsheet listing out all those potential opportunities for improvement or action items, decisions that the city needs to work through. So that by the time we get to implementation beginning, some of those discussions have taken place. And given that they can be time-consuming discussions, there's appropriate time to have those before the decision needs to be made for implementation. And then in the RFP, and certainly in the services we would recommend the city purchase, would be change management. We've embedded it into many components of our advisory services to the city. But it's certainly a very important, the people component of the project.
Okay, last question. One of the biggest trends in ERP implementations and any kind of software implementations over the past few years is that we've, we've improved the ability to implement and reduced the time of implementation from five years to three years to one year. Where do you see this in terms of the time of implementation? Because the forecast seemed pretty high for me when I looked at that.
I would say for each of the high-level areas, you know, finance and HR, we typically see nine to 12 months if we take a phased approach to implementation now. Those could be totally sequential, you know, not starting until the previous phase is live. Or there could be some overlap. There are some vendors that do propose shorter timeframes. But we would suggest a more conservative approach so that we don't run the risk of project delays and make sure we have adequate time for all the different tasks.
You're not using, you're allowing the ability to choose the software and a different implementation partner as well? Is that the plan or you're leaving that up to the vendors to decide?
As it stands, that is the current plan. But as we have the initial discussions with the city, as we start the project up again, there'd be the opportunity to adjust how we're requesting those services and software.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we move on to Mayor Chow.
Hello, hi. Thank you for answering all my questions. And this is a very complex system. I understand that this is a very important thing for all the agencies to have. And it's costly, but then it does save cost. So I wonder, what's our current subscription cost for the current Tyler New World system?
Currently, we pay $120,000 a year.
So that means, once we move to the new system, is, I think it's 550? Is it 60? I think I see three different numbers.
Again, those are estimated numbers, so we won't know until we actually select a vendor and negotiate the contract. But yes, the 120 that we pay for Tyler New World now will be offset by the cost moving forward.
Okay, great. And you mentioned that the new system, the required components will include accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets, general ledger, grants, payroll, time entry, employee benefits and self-service. Do we use separate system for those now that we are paying a new subscription for?
No, only the optional items that I mentioned. We have separate standalone systems for. The core items that are listed here, we either have them now or we don't have them at all. For example, like purchasing, when we first purchased New World, we didn't have purchasing as a function in our city, so that is not included. Grants, we don't have grant function. So some of these items in the core required, we don't have at all currently, and others we do.
Okay, then I am wondering, so from 120 to 550 is a big jump. And especially given our current financial situation. My understanding is when we go for a higher-end system, it needs to justify there is this much saving. So that's worth the system. So I don't see a justification for the saving it will bring us. So where is it saving us in terms of personnel or other systems that? Because I thought this kind of system is supposed to improve efficiency.
It does improve efficiency as far as day-to-day operational costs and just function of everyday processing of these systems. So the savings is really in staff time and energy.
We would be expecting a reduction in staff? Remember that would be a result of this system?
Through the Vice Mayor, if I may. So I think, as stated in the staff report, right now, there's a lot of manual process that the staff is currently working on in terms of payroll, time sheets and whatnot. So it's very time-intensive and also it just encourages more air to occur. So what we're hoping to do with the new ERP system is that we'll bring this into a centralized platform and also to reduce the manual process by increasing the efficiencies. We're not going to be looking at reducing staff. I think there will be other areas of work that staff can pay attention to, which is really the overarching goal for having a more efficient ERP system.
It's five times the cost. So efficiency was at the five times the current cost. I understand the current system is outdated. So I'm wondering, right now, we don't know exactly what system we would eventually purchase. This is an RFP for a consultant to start to evaluate the system. So it seems we don't have to go for the high-end funding right now. Is it possible that we provide funding to move forward with our, with consultant to start evaluating the system? And then come back with funding modification where we have more clear picture how our system is there and whether the cost justify the efficiency that it actually brings us?
Yes, one option is that we move forward with ERP preparation and vendor selection process. And then we come back to council once we have a vendor selected and we're ready to move forward with the contract.
So can we not allocate the full amount right now?
Yes.
And come back, so what would be then the amount we are adopting today if we?
So we don't need to adopt any amount today. We can just get approval to move forward with the project. We do have the contract in place with Plant Moran and the funds that were postponed or put aside for this project for the RFP preparation and vendor selection. So that's already been encumbered and has been set aside. So we can move forward with that part of the project and then come back to you once we've made the selection and get approval for the contract.
Oh, so do I need to amend the current contract with the consultant? Do we don't need any extra funding to amend?
No, we can move forward with what we have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go for another round of questions. Councilmember Fu, do you have any questions further? Okay, Councilmember Mohan?
Just a quick question. So are you saying that our funds currently available for the consultant to issue an RFP? And that we would not need to increase appropriations at this point?
That's right. Yeah, so we, in 2023, we went ahead and did a contract with Plant Moran to do the three things. So the needs assessment, which was completed, and that's when we postponed the project. But the other two items were ERP preparation and vendor selection, as well as implementation project management services. Those are still encumbered funds. So we can move forward with that piece, but the project itself was put on hold by council. So if we get approval from you to move forward, we can complete the ERP and the vendor selection. And then come back to you with the actual contract for approval.
Okay, I'm sorry. The ask is to approve your action, your future action regarding sending out, initiating the RFP?
Yes.
Through the Vice Mayor, if I may.
The ask is to move forward with the ERP replacement project and to move forward with the RFP preparation and vendor selection stage.
So through the Vice Mayor, if I may, I think the ask is for council to allow the project to be in place, not this year, but sometime. So we have the budget appropriated for the project after the RFP. Right now, there's no budget for the ERP system to be in place, to be implemented and also going on forward for continued maintenance. The reason we're coming to you, not only just for efficiency, as explained in the staff report, there is a great risk of cybersecurity imposed on the outdated, obsolete platform. So what we're asking is, yes, we do have the funding for the consultant sitting in front of you today for them to issue the RFP. However, we don't want that work to go in vain, right? So if we go ahead and do the RFP without the budget allocation approved today, we can't complete the implementation and select a vendor to close the gap on our cybersecurity. We would like to have that as a seamless process so that we can go ahead and do the RFP, keep you in the loop, informed of what's going on. And then we can go ahead and get the vendors start working on the implementation to minimize our cybersecurity risk right away. We don't have, and I just want to emphasize that, we do not have the budget allocated for the actual work. We have just the funding for the RFP only.
Yes, that's correct.
And I just wanted to add one thing, if I may, which is that for the vendors that are responding, this is oftentimes a pretty cost-intensive effort for them in time. So we're going to be asking for a significant amount of information and time, both in the response, which could be upwards of, you know, multiple hundreds of pages, as well as for those that we would like to see come in for software demonstrations and answer follow-up questions. It is not uncommon for vendors to do research into the budget status. And if there are not any funds budgeted, some vendors, you run the risk that vendors may determine that it's not an investment they would like to make and you could have a reduced response rate.
Quick question.
Councilmember Mohan?
So to clarify, is this a set aside for now? This 3.7 million, are we, you're requesting us to increase the appropriations or budget this item? So if we do, then the 3.744, whatever, will be set aside in a separate fund, not to be touched till the RFP process has been determined? Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
So when we're looking at the 3.74 million, that is the Tier Two high scenario. Tier Two low scenario, 1.3 million. Tier One high scenario is almost $6 million. And Tier One low scenario, $2.6 million. So we have something kind of middle-of-the-road for this amount. And is there a reason for that strategy?
Yeah, so what we were thinking is, we don't want to go with the low-end Tier Two because it's too similar and we wouldn't be able to do similar to what we have now. We wouldn't be able to potentially get all of the components that we needed. But sticking with the Tier Two, we know we're focusing in at least on ERPs that are dedicated to local government ERP systems. They're built around, they're built for local government. So the high end there gives us a good range to ideally view all of the responses that would meet our needs.
Okay, and this might be, I don't know who can answer this question. So in looking at local government software versus software that's made for the private sector, and it might, this answer might involve a bunch of acronyms, but what's the difference for laypeople to know?
Yes, so if you're looking at what we would call a Tier One system as it's defined in the report, that system would have functionality to support organizations in the private sector and public sector. So there's a need for some additional configuration to make it able to meet the specific needs of a public sector organization, given its flexibility. However, given that wider range, there is oftentimes, if not always, more functionality available, higher R&amp;D budget, et cetera, that has the ability to provide some newer technology and ongoing innovation. Not to say that the Tier Two systems don't have very significant R&amp;D and investment budgets as well.
Could you mention what sort of differences in the software is necessary for public municipal software systems?
Yes, I mean, just at the simplest level, fund accounting. But also, if you might look at one of the Tier One systems that hasn't been configured for public sector, you might see things like, you know, sales data and other things that are not being done at the city.
Okay, thank you. Anything with regards to cybersecurity that might be different?
I don't think there's any specific differences, other than just the general, like size of the companies. You know, larger companies can make larger investments. But I think both vendors in the Tier One and Tier Two space are making significant cybersecurity investments.
Okay, thank you. So next, we'll go to Councilmember Wong for any further clarifying questions.
I just want to make a couple of quick points. I mean, the average cost for public sector ERP is running about $100, $250 per user per month. And so when you run those calculations, I mean, that's kind of in line with on the Tyler side. During on Tier Two on a workday, Oracle, you know, if you're running SAP, that kind of system at that point, right? It may be a little bit more expensive, depending what features you're trying to go for. I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know, it's not necessarily true that, you know, if we don't have a budget allocated, that people won't do the RFP. We are the city of Cupertino and that's, it's not like we're going to actually not run an ERP or procure an ERP. But what I would want to clarify, the question I have for you is, what is the minimum, what is the minimum budget you need to get this project going? So that we have a requirement stock, we have a vendor selection process in place, and we can support an RFP process for the vendors? What is that minimum number that you need?
It's the number that we put out there, the 3.7 million, one time.
Seriously, 3.7 million to do that? Wow, okay.
I mean, ultimately, you know, if we went forward with less, then we're telling the vendors that this is all we can pay. So then we limit who responds back to the RFP. We've seen that happen in other cities, namely Los Gatos, who actually put a cap on the amount of how much they would spend and they got one response.
But 3.74 million on a five-year amortized basis is $7,480 per user per month, which is just crazy.
That's not ongoing cost, those are the one-time costs.
623, sorry, divided by 12 per year. So that's a pretty big number to do implementation. You're 4X on your license fees against your implementation. That's pretty high. You're basically telling the vendors bid high, and you do that too. That's my thing. So what is the minimum number that you think we can do to get out, get a number out there to continue the project, put in RFP and make sure we're okay for cybersecurity?
Through the Vice Mayor, if I may.
Please.
I believe what's before the council today is the contract and the budget allocation, I'm sorry, not the contract, the RFP starting and the project and the budget allocation. I understand that each council member has difference in their opinions and we respect that.
And I would just add that, you know, this is just what was just stated. There still would be an opportunity, once the vendor has been selected, to come back and share the rationale for selecting a vendor at whatever cost it was selected at, based on the criteria the city sets up.
Okay, Councilmember Wong, you have two more minutes.
I have my time back.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Chow? Okay, and this is still clarifying questions, thank you. Mayor Chow, you're sharing your screen, but we cannot hear you. And we're looking for clarifying questions, we still need to go for public comment.
Okay, yeah. So for the, this is from the needs analysis. For the Tier Two, on the right side is Tier Two low scenario and high scenario. So it seems that the estimates that request for the budget modification is based on high scenario for Tier Two. And the cost is two times or sometimes four times, three times of the low scenario here too. I understand that low scenario likely is not sufficient. But then I'm not convinced we need the high scenario. And for example, budget, perfect works project, though we usually have an engineering estimate of what we think is the best value for the, estimate for the project. And then that is a value we put. And then people bid on that. Because if you Because if you include the highest amount of budget for that, people are going to bid to that limit. They are not, so my question is, is it possible that we say, we move forward with this because we understand we need that? And then that's have a mid checkpoint, where you bring us options of different pricing options, rather than tell us, here's a contract we have selected, and that's the one pricing. Then the council has to either go up or down. Is it possible that we have a mid checkpoint where we can look at, can we maybe have a mid-tier two, a high-tier two option, and then we then allocate funding?
So let me just state that we don't plan to advertise that we have this fund, and this is exactly what we plan to spend on the project.
Well, people are going to know whether you advertise.
If they look into the budget, they can see what the total cost is, and then understand that the city is.
That actually means you don't need funding allocated today, if you are not going to advertise. That's good to know. Thank you.
I didn't understand that.
Right? You don't need the funding allocated today for the RFP to go forward.
It would be beneficial to have the funding, as our consultant said, that having that funding, you know, these ERPs, because.
You're contradicting yourself a little bit.
Well, these vendors, they do spend a lot of time submitting an RFP. It's a very lengthy and resource intense project. So they.
Very high rewarding, also.
So they potentially do look into the budget and see if there are funds allocated to an RFP. So if there's no funds allocated to an RFP, we are potentially losing some vendors to propose on the project.
Yeah, I think that the recommended course of action is so that the city has the largest possible set of respondents to evaluate and choose from, and then would still have the ability to encourage competition amongst those vendors, and even make adjustments to the scope of the software and services that are purchased once a vendor's been selected. There can still be that discussion. We just would like to not have the city be in a position where, you know, like you said before, there, there's only one or two responses to choose from, and you don't have that ability to make those comparisons.
Thank you, but I thought your plan was, the staff will make selection of the vendor to, and make only one recommendation chosen for the council, right? And that likely will be the one that use the maximum amount of funding.
I think it would be based on the evaluation criteria that's set aside, and certainly based on the feedback we've heard today. I think cost will be a key component to that evaluation process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I believe we've finished our clarifying questions. Madam City Clerk, do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on this item?
Vice Mayor, there are two members of the public requesting to speak virtually, and so I will move to those people. We have San R, followed by Tracy K. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only, as a resident and a waterer. I would like to urge staff and council to please take a careful look at the comments that I submitted in writing. I urge you to reject the choices presented to you today. Once again, it is a set of false choices that vendors will not respond to a credible customer like the city of Cupertino, absent a budget allocation. On the other hand, once a budget is in place, the project will consume the entirety of the budget and then some overruns. And a city like Cupertino has thousands of ERP consultants near residents. I urge you to direct this process through regular outreach agendas on TICC, so that the TIC Commission can be used to have enough public engagement of your residents, who are deep experts in this space. Cupertino is full of ERP and other tech savvy people that can provide input to this process. I'm extremely concerned, as the conversation has progressed today, at the, at the false choice that you're being presented by this consultant, so much so that I am now compelled to ask whether you can terminate this consultant's contract, and find a more competitive consultant who will present you with an honest set of choices to look at ERP vendors without a budget provided upfront. I'd also like to understand why we believe that a refresh of Tyler is not sufficient, because as I sent you in my written comments, a number of credible cities, including Fremont, are using Tyler today. I have so far not seen specifics on what gaps exist, and the gaps in needs assessment from 2022 is three years old. So I'm really concerned that we have an aged needs assessment, a lack of very, very specific gaps, and in the three years that have passed since generative AI has completely transformed use cases and workflows. And so at this point, we should not be writing an RFP based on the needs assessment that was done before generative AI actually took hold. And we should definitely not be putting aside 3.7 million for this project. I would actually urge you to relook at whether this consultant is the right one to take us forward. And please use the expertise of your residents. And I'm thankful for Councilmember Ray Wong being on the dais to be able to provide opinions that reflect the will of residents. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Tracy K. Welcome, Tracy.
Good evening, City Council and staff. Please note that I'm speaking for myself only. So I appreciate the interest in process improvement, and it's important for Cupertino first, though, to level set in its financial situation. So from a revenue standpoint, I did see the comparable table that was included in one of the attachments, but Cupertino is really not comparable to Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, or Palabato financially. The idea that we should be spending, you know, 3.7 million plus on an ERP when, you know, our operating budget or revenue is around 120 million is just spending beyond our means. And the only relevant comparable I'm seeing in this table is maybe City of Mountain View, which spent about 1.3 million on its ERP. They have an annual revenue that is probably more in line with ours, but for all the other cities, they're really not in line, about 2X our revenue and budget. And if you look at Sunnyvale, it's an example of how difficult that these implementations can be. The original, they hired Cherry Road in 2018 for 12 million. Then six months in, they terminated the agreement, hired a new consultant for 4 million for implementation. Now, if you look online, you can see that they have a bid out for a final consultant for testing of the recently implemented tool. So they've gone through like two to three consultants, and I don't even think they're fully done yet. So these are very difficult things to implement, and it's questionable, you know, one thing that could be added to that comparable table is, how happy are these cities with the solutions that they have? Is anybody happy with their ERP? These things are difficult to implement, and they require a lot of buy-in across the enterprise, or across the organization. Other questions that I have is, Tyler ERP really a lower tier two option? Tyler is considered to be the market leader in public sector ERP solutions. So I would question, if we're still looking within the tier two space, are we really going to get anything better? Secondly, how much has the city worked with Tyler to actually try to solve its problems? You know, I see all of the cane points listed in the report, but what I didn't see was whether staff really tried to work to solve that with the vendor. You know, if we're paying the vendor so much on an annual basis, they should be incentivized to help fix any problems that we have. On the security side, again, shouldn't Tyler also be able to help fix any data breach issues that we have? And, you know, I do see that other ERP providers have also had data breaches. So for example, Oracle had a NetSuite ERP data breach. So, you know, switching providers doesn't necessarily protect you from that. And then, you know, I can see them running out of time. I actually have more questions, but, you know, if the implementation takes over three, three, five years, is the technology going to be outdated by the time we've implemented it? So how can we do this faster and at a lower cost, so that we don't have a technology that's obsolete by the time it's rolled out? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. Vice Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Like to see if there's a motion from the City Council for this item?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I'll make a motion at this moment, to go with the staff's recommended action, and then we can go deliberate from there, and then we can make friendly amendments.
Do I have a second?
What is the motion again?
The recommended action? Okay, we have a second from Mayor Chow. So with deliberation, I'll just go by firsthand raised. Councilmember Wong, your hands raised.
In my professional life, I've done thousands of ERP vendor selections. I have done the UN ERP vendor selection. We've done a lot of public sector vendor selections. You do not need to state your budget. You do not need to state your budget if you're going to advertise how much you're willing to spend to get a response. There are very limited options in ERP. When you're looking at public sector ERP, it's Tyler at the local municipal level, and it's really just SAP, Oracle, and maybe Workday for HR and finance. So that's pretty much it. So I don't know how many other vendors you're going to get in that process. So any consultant that would tell you, there's other vendors that are going to come out of the woodwork, this stuff doesn't exist. That's the point, right? You have a very limited set to begin with. So if you don't understand your requirements, you can't get a good deal, and you can't understand how much you need, and you can't understand the implementation time. So I'm making the assumption that we had good requirement. And so, but I also don't want us to be facing a security breach, and other cities have actually found workarounds for that. The question is, did we come around to find a workaround? But we do need a good ERP. I'm not against a good ERP system, but what I really do want is make sure we have a good process and a good fiscally responsible process during that vendor selection. And so the question is, and this is why I asked the questionnaire, my friendly amendment is, I would love to actually continue the process, but not allocate 3.7 million to do that. I'm not sure what the consultant status is. I'm not there to say, hey, we should go fire the consultant. But my point being is, we should at least walk through this process with a little bit more financial rigor, because the average cost per user was so high on a five-year basis, that didn't make any sense when you look at those numbers. So I do want to ratchet that down, but I don't want to stop you from impeding a process. So if someone can think of a way to craft a friendly amendment that says, let's continue the RFP process, let's continue the implementation, the computer everything, so that it comes back to council for a choice, and not just a blanket statement that we're hearing from the city manager, like, we have to pass this now, we have to do this now, because we don't do it, right, and they're not going to come back to us, and what the consultant is saying is, we've got to have a number out there, so they're going to respond, they're all going to respond. And if they don't, I'll personally make phone calls to each of those vendors who I work with anyways, to say, come and do it, right? That's not the issue. So all I'm trying to say is, I want this process to go forward. I want it to be fiscally responsible, and if someone can think of a friendly amendment to do that, I will support that.
I have a question for the city attorney regarding a council member involving themselves in the, the process of collecting vendors who would provide an RFP.
I mean, I think we would have to look at that, that more closely. I think that there generally would be a separation of the RFP process and the council approval of a contract. So I think, I think, you know, certainly, I think everybody here respects Councilmember Wong's knowledge in this area. I just, I still, I just think that we do have to be careful about making sure that those, those roles are maintained as separate.
I agree. Let's make sure we do that, too.
Thank you. Through the chair. Okay, next, we have Mayor Chow.
Hi. Okay, so I think, so our current system is Tyler New World. And Santash mentioned that this is used currently at Fremont, Tracy, Watsonville, Berkeley, Oxnard, Leinster, Terlo, and then some other cities. So are they, my understanding is Tyler New World, they are not supporting that anymore? Or is this a different generation of Tyler New World other cities are still using today?
I think there's a little bit of confusion, yes. Tyler Technologies has three, three ERPs under its belt. They have Tyler New World, which is the one we have. They have Tyler Enterprise, which is the one most municipalities are using. And then they have ERP for schools, that's geared towards schools, ERP, yeah. So, yeah, there's definitely a differentiation there between Tyler New World and Tyler Enterprise.
So you are saying these other cities on Santash found are not using Tyler New World? They are likely using Tyler Enterprise, that's a newer version?
They, yeah, Tyler Enterprise is their version that they're putting all of their resources into, yes. I don't know what, which ERP those cities that you mentioned use currently, but there are multiple.
Okay. A question is, so is it, it is, I understand, very complex system with a lot of components. So we do want to help to control the cost. So if it's legally possible, can we form a subcommittee of council members to work with the staff during the evaluation process? Is that viable? That way, we won't be, the subcommittee can give the council a recommendation on maybe different price points on the different options.
City manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor Chow, can you elaborate on what the charter, the subcommittee would do? Is it to help the staff and consultant to select a vendor? Or, I guess I'm trying to guess on clarifying result of the subcommittee?
Not select the vendor, but understand the different options involved in, in the different, different options that different vendor offers, so that, because my, I'm hoping that we would have mid checkpoint, so that the council can make a decision then, do we go with lower and mid, mid, middle point, mid-tier, maybe higher tier system? I think there is, there cannot be just low and high. The price differs so much, there must be some middle point, and we just, right now, don't have that visibility to know where those points are. Maybe a subcommittee working with staff can help bring those options forward for the council to make a decision at that time.
Isn't that shown in the needs assessment, though? I mean, there are the tier one, low end, high end, and tier two, low end and high end. I mean, I think that will be the range for the total amount.
That's all the range, and the pricing differences to, to, to.
We can add, we can propose a combination of different, I mean, I guess, I'm trying to understand what the subcommittee would do, and then do we go through the RFP process and tell the vendor to wait until council has deliberate on the total dollar amount before the implementation? I guess what I'm trying to understand, how staff can support the subcommittee, and then still run the RFP on a parallel track?
We, Councilmember Wong, who has experience with, has something to suggest?
Thank you. Mayor Chow, you have 14 seconds left.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I see a hand raised from Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, I mean, I would just propose a friendly amendment to continue with the RFP and then do the budgeting later. That would save us some time. I think that may be the easiest way here. I don't know if anyone's up for it, but a friendly amendment to move forward with the RFP, but not appropriate budget, and use the TICC as needed for additional input. That's my friendly amendment. Is there a second? Through the chair.
I was a secondor. So does that mean we moved actually the staff recommendation without the budget modification?
Correct. That's what I would be intending.
I approve the motion as, approve the friendly amendment as a secondor.
Thank you. So I want to ask staff, so if we appropriate the 3.7 million, the contract comes in, and we're going to evaluate, and I'm going to. and we're going to evaluate, and I'm going to assume that you're going to have à la carte items on there where the request from HR, there were multiple components that they were looking for. You have the contract component that finance was looking for. So those would, the contract, the RFP would come back with those types of?
Options.
Elements? Okay, so, because you had like this table showing the, let me get to it, the required items. You had different, here we go, you had the replace, consider, maintain, and interface options for the application migration plan. Okay, and so some of those options would be included in the RFP? Okay, and you'll be deciding that along with staff? Okay, and again, to point out why we would be appropriating the 3.7 million now, could that be mentioned again?
So it puts the money aside that is needed for the entire cost of the one time, which does include the vendor implementation costs ranging from low end tier two to high end tier two, which does incorporate tier one low end, as well as potential full-time backfill for staff, temporary backfill that we potentially need. Typically, you do have your users working on the new system and you do need to have a couple to backfill and do the day-to-day operations while they do implement the new system. So we'll incorporate that cost as well. So putting that money aside basically signals that, yes, we are, the city has been approved to move forward with this project and that we are understanding of all the costs involved.
Remind me again, you're mentioning a range. What, do we have a low, the low-end range number?
So the cost that we're asking for is the 3.7 million, which does include the vendor implementation costs. That's 1.7 as well as the full-time employee, two, sorry, four full-time temporary employees, which is a million.
Okay. And for the, for our consultants, have you, do you, have you gone out for RFPs without having an allocation from other cities and have some experience with how that went? Or is this typically what each city does, is that we're going to come up with an allocation, you go out for your RFP? And then at the end, I mean, we're still able to say, we can reject all the contracts and we can then move the money out of that appropriation and back into the general fund. That's, it's our decision.
Right.
Okay, so I understand that part correct. And then what about the appropriation at the start? Because I understand the fear that people are saying, if you put, if you say this, then they're going to go and, you know, firewall you right to that number.
Yeah, and there is an element of, you know, it being an open procurement and competition. But I would say the most common thing that we see is that funds are allocated and the specific amount for the ERP project is not made publicly available. But it is made publicly available that funds have been allocated. That could potentially allay some of the risks that have been identified by council members today. Certainly, there have been some organizations we've worked with that haven't allocated funds and there have been some limited responses we've got. We could provide or research specific examples of that. But I think ensuring that funds are allocated and that the fact that the funds are indeed allocated would be the most important piece. Making that specific amount available would be secondary.
Okay, and so I don't want to hamstring the process with regards to that. The 2014 version that we had, that it took a while to implement it, I think almost, you can correct me, I think it took almost four years. But in the implementation of that ERP, the 14-year embezzlement was discovered and it paid for itself, right?
That's right.
Okay. Councilmember Fruen, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, so I wanted to sort of raise a similar sort of concern on timing, which is just in having looked at entirely too many contracts in my day job, that there is this very frustrating point that you get to as a policymaker if there's only one responsive bid because you feel like there's really no choice and you know that there are other people out there who do this sort of work and you wonder why they didn't bother. And I would hate to get in the way of that just because we're concerned about, you know, the nature of the competition that might arise. But the thing that bothers me the most about the potential for having either one responsive bid or no responsive bids is that then we're delaying the entire process even further. And we've kind of been kicking this can down the road already. And we know that there are additional risks that are around the corner, some of which we are already exposed to. And I would much prefer that we be well-positioned to have a good, solid set of options that comes back that we can then evaluate later. And if it means that, yes, at the end, we're looking at, you know, a good bid that you've selected and is in front of us for a contract and we still hate it, we can always say no, right? But that would, that would get us in no worse position than where we are if there are no bids. So when weighing between those two options, I feel like the best course of action here is to not tie your hands too much and, you know, approve just the staff recommended action. Thank you.
Is that a substitute motion?
I will offer it as a substitute motion, yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Mohan, seconds. I see a hand raised from Mayor Chow.
I think she's muted.
Sorry. I would like to offer another substitute motion for approving the staff recommendation, but with the amount that, the budget modification for $2.5 million, which is the midpoint between the lower, lower end tier two and higher end tier two. I think according to the staff, they just need a budget allocated. The amount really doesn't matter. And our concern is, if we allocate a high amount, we go a bit to the highest end. But what we really want is really a midpoint system that's just sufficient. So I would propose this as a substitute motion, 2.5 million budget modification.
I'll second.
Okay, second from Councilmember Wong. Okay, I see two hands still raised. Councilmember Wong, your hand still raised?
It is. I was planning to leave a quick comment. The ERP market is highly competitive. Everybody wants a shot at this business. The margins are 95% in this business. People are going to bid. Any fear that someone isn't going to bid to get $150 per user per month or less out of us is not a realistic conversation point. We have so much talent in Cupertino that could help and assist as well, and I hope we take advantage of that talent. But, you know, for the purpose of this, I mean, you're basically advertising, we'll pay up to this amount when you throw out a number like that. So I would, I would defer from the opinion of the consultant that you do not need to put a number out there. But if we're going to put a number out there to get this process moving, that's fine. But you are making it harder by actually advertising this. The second piece I'm most worried about is the lack of any kind of check and balance on our spending in the city. And so if we approve it the way that this was written, basically what will happen is, we're just going to give a blank check to staff to go and just spend it. And we cannot continue to do that. All cross, all cross every single capital improvement project. We need to start putting some freezes and we need to start containing spending because it is out-of-control spending for consultants. We don't need consultants that shouldn't be here and we've got a lot of spending issues. And so we have to start this process now, having things coming back, not to micromanage, but to manage our, manage our public dollars with a lot more fiduciary responsibility than we are. So this is why I'm reacting the way I'm reacting.
I have a question for the city attorney. Thank you, Councilmember Wong. So if this, if the city were to appropriate a lower dollar amount than what's requested and the contract comes in, we have various bids come back and one of the bids is above that. Is there any ability for the city council to appropriate more, looking at what's offered and say, you know, we really do want to have all of that? Can we increase those appropriations at that time?
Yes, so if the, if the RFP process were completed and the recommended vendor came in with a bid that was above, above the amount appropriated, council could adjust the budget to, and award the contract at that time.
And is, can you, and I don't know if it's, if another member of staff would want to weigh in on this. Can you think of some unintended consequence, negative impact of doing this that we may regret later? Because I hear the arguments and they are, they're pretty compelling to go with a lower dollar amount at this time. And then if we want to go higher, we can. But can you think of anything else?
I mean, I can't think of any legal reason. I mean, I think I would have to defer to our finance staff and our IT staff for any sort of, you know, financial or technical reasons. But I can't think of a legal reason.
Okay, and could someone please remind me the dollar amount that was specified from that motion?
$2.5 million, Vice Mayor.
2.5. So I would like to hear from Councilmember Mohan and Councilmember Fruen if they have some thoughts about, about the second substitute motion. I don't see a hand. Councilmember Mohan?
With all due respect, if we start playing around with the 3.7, the 2.5 is somewhat arbitrary. Why not 2.3? Why not 2.1? We have a number that, that staff has come up with on the basis of fairly lengthy reasoning. We're not, staff has made it clear that we're not, we're not expected to be putting out the 3.7 million right away for the ERP project. So I'm comfortable setting aside the 3.7 million with the caveat that, and this doesn't even really need to be spelled out, but it is to be put in some kind of a reserve, which it'll come back to council again and we approve the actual expenditures for this project. I'm also comfortable with the process that our staff has described and especially the fact that we will have input and feedback at every step of the process. If we don't like the RFP, we can reject it at that point. If we like the RFP and we didn't like something else about the negotiation, we can bail out at that point. So I think we have many avenues to get out of the project if we did not like the course that it's taking. And so with all those precautions, I am comfortable approving the 3.7 to be set aside and waiting for the next step of the process. We haven't even really gotten to first base at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fruen?
So I'd go in a slightly different direction because it sounds like one of the things that is motivating everybody's concern is sort of what ultimate end number are we going to get to here? And so I'd be perfectly fine with offering, you know, some opportunity for there to be review from council in one form or another. And perhaps the city manager can help us craft exactly what that would look like of the RFP under the, for the submitted vendors. Because that sounds like it's one of the key issues that's really motivating the discussion.
Through the Vice Mayor, my May. I believe what Councilmember Fruen is asking for additional check-in on the process. I believe, and correct me if wrong, RFP is a public document, so it's going to be available on the website. I'm more than happy to share that information with council and providing a link and so that council and members of public can have full access. We're more than happy to also provide the end of the RFP process. And also, and perhaps, and this is where it gets a little dicey and gray, provide a list of all of the people who have submitted their proposals. However, I want to be very careful and this is where Chris is going to stop me. We can't have influential factors deciding on the best option. So as much as I want to share the vendors and have additional conversation with the council, I want to just honor that boundary that we are evaluating the vendors based on the criteria that has been set aside. So, and if there are additional checkpoints that council would like us to bring back or have an info memo or have additional heads up, more than happy to do so.
I would just add that we'd want to be careful in whatever checkpoint that we set to keep, keep the, 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 the RFP development and evaluation process, and particularly the evaluation process separate from council approval of the contract.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm sort of asking for here is just visibility for council so that we really understand what's happening and what the options are.
Thank you. And next we have Mayor Chow. Please unmute.
Just want to clarify, 2.5 million is not an arbitrary point. I added the high, higher tier and lower end together and took an average. The average is 2.5. That's the exact midpoint between the higher and low end. And the higher and low end are estimated also. They are not exact numbers. So I think midpoint shows our desire for the staff to come back with a system that's mid-tier.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Councilmember Wong?
I like where Councilmember Fruen's going with a check-in. It needs to be a real check-in where we actually approve the final budget and do not give a blank check to the city, to city staff to spend. I think that's an important piece. So if someone actually supports that, I'll go with that. I'm fine with a midpoint, just so people know.
Councilmember Wong, if I may ask you a question. What if the, the RFP comes back and it's at 3.2 million in order to have all the components that we're interested in? Is that something that you, you would perhaps be willing to look at that or is 2.5 a hard stop?
There is not necessarily a hard stop in that way, but we should be able to have the ability to walk away from a deal. Just because you started the process on an ERP, if you're not getting a price that you wanted, if you're not getting the functionality you want, you should be able to walk away. Just because you start the process doesn't mean we have to finish it. And we tend to do that a lot in the city. And so we've got to learn to be able to walk away from a deal when it's a bad deal. That's, I want to make sure we preserve that option in procurement.
Thank you. I do have a further question for, for staff, just to, to continue clarifying this item. So if we were to put in the 2.5 million and appropriate that amount today and the, and the RFP comes back above that, you know, what is the danger of having the 2.5? And what is our flexibility then to, how do we legally go to a higher amount after we've gone to the RFP process?
I think council approval for the contract, as well as any additional funding that's needed, will add to the, to the 2.5 million if need be.
Okay, thank you. There's still a hand raised from Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that, and if, when it comes back, if 3.2 million will give us more features that we feel we need so that we know it justifies the higher, higher cost. I would be more than happy to, to do more, to approve budget modification for a higher number or even 3.7 million. At that point, then we would know, okay, this extra cost is because of this specific feature. But then I would feel very comfortable doing that at that time.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. To our staff and consultants. To our staff and consultants, is that something that you feel that can be worked with?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Councilmember Fruin?
So, again, I just want to clarify, if we went through the RFP process and you brought us a contract and we don't like it, we can certainly say no at that point, correct?
That's, and you're right, yes.
Exactly, okay. Unlike a lot of other things that do come to us at that point, that have gone through the RFP process, and they're in front of us for, you know, a contract that we're going to approve or deny, in many of those instances, we have a whole bunch of, you know, other funding that comes from some other source that is going to go away at that point, or is the result of some sort of elaborate grant that occurred earlier on in the process. That is not the case here, though, is it?
No, that's not the case. But just so you know, the whole process of going through the RFP and the vendor selection is very lengthy and resource-intensive. It's not just reviewing proposals, it's reviewing presentations, it's doing site visits of cities that are using the technology, it's doing interviews, it's doing references. It's very intensive. And then, after that process, we start negotiations, right? So, that's also a very intensive process, back and forth with the attorneys, with their attorneys. So, when we come to you with the contract, that's because it is the best selection that we've put together from the city with the entire project team, our consultants, all of the time and energy that have been put into it. So, just knowing that that's what goes into it, you know, that's something you need to evaluate.
Yeah, I'm not trying to belittle that. I'm just trying to draw a distinction between a lot of the contracts that we do see, and where they sit, and how we got there, versus this one and what we would be evaluating at the time, right? This is our own money. I presume it's all coming from the general fund. This isn't something that, you know, we've had to go and beg the state or Uncle Sam for, or that we're going to lose if we don't approve it by a particular point in time. The real time constraint here is just the obsolescence of the current system, the fact that it's not really serving our needs, that we know that we're going to need to change it, that it creates exposure for us. And so, the longer that we remain exposed, the more likely it is then that something bad happens that we could have prevented. So, I generally remain in favor of offering you the larger latitude here so that you can get, you know, more responsive bids. I certainly respect Councilmember Wong's personal experience. I wouldn't want somebody to second-guess my legal experience as an attorney. But I also know that, you know, we employ you to do these things, and that you are the experts in this space, and that this is very particularized. So, I'm willing to trust that this is the number that you need in order to get the number of responsive bids that are going to be most helpful to us and make sure that the city is able to meet its needs going forward. I do, though, think that what would be helpful to, if we are going to have that larger figure, will be very helpful to my colleagues, just so that they feel like this is going in a direction that they want to see it go, is for us to have, you know, some kind of a check-in in between. And as long as that happens, I would be perfectly happy with the recommended action otherwise.
Not seeing anyone's hands raised at the moment. So, just to reiterate, if we set aside the 2.5 million, and that's not a number that you're putting in your package for these vendors, okay? And then, when it comes back, we can increase that amount based on what we see. So, what really is that? How is that, the 3.7, kind of relevant to this process? And now, I'm getting a little confused. It's like, well, why is that just to make our consultants feel more secure when they go to do the RFP process and bring in these proposals? And does it help that you're also hearing from the council that, yes, we're willing to go above that? I mean, clearly, I think we've heard it, you know, at least from three of us, maybe all five of us, that we're willing to go above the 2.5. Is that at all helpful for your negotiation, knowing that?
Well, again, I think it's a matter of them going in and doing the research, right? Does the city have the funds set aside to dedicate to this project? And it's not just the funds for the vendor to do the implementation, but are they serious enough where they're putting funds aside for all the other factors that are needed? The project management, the temporary staff, to really do a successful project? Because it is a partnership, and a lot of times, they expect the city to do, you know, 50% of that work, right? They're not just taking it and building it and coming back. It's us putting in that effort as well. So, I think that's what the experience has been from the Plant Moran side, as far as, does it help that they look and see that there is a budget that considers all the factors that go into implementing one of these systems? Yes. Are they going to look and see that we only have 2.5 million and not bid on our project? I don't, I can't tell you that for sure.
Yeah, I'd say there is a chance that some of the more costly vendors might see that difference, and say, this budget amount is not going to support the system and the implementation approach we think the city needs to be successful, and choose not to bid. Not all of them, right? But just maybe some of the more costly options. And they could also go and, you know, listen to the recording of this meeting and hear the support and discussion, and say, well, but we do see that there is, you know, openness to change, and they may decide to bid. It's just a business decision they'll need to make based on the data that's presented to them.
Okay. And you're expecting to get the bids back in November? Okay, so what happens if we say 2.5, and we end up with bids that we are not happy with, and we need to go do this again, put it out? We have had that for the council, had to put things back out to bid. How many months are we looking at there?
Well, at that point, the RFP is already complete, so it's a matter of, I would ask your...
Yeah, we would, assuming that there haven't been any significant changes in processes like we were speaking about earlier, we would just update the, you know, key dates and what have you in the RFP, re-release it, and go through that evaluation process, which I want to make sure we're staying consistent, but it would be kind of a similar timeline to what was provided, less maybe a month or so, for those discussions to identify potentially new processes that we'd be doing this time.
So, we would have to go through the same. I mean, it depends. Are we going to get all of a sudden new vendors that we didn't get before? If we do, then we do need to go through the whole process of presentations and site visits, interviews, you know, all the evaluation process.
And has that happened before? Have you had that happen with cities?
That they've re-released the RFP? Yep. So, the question would be, when is that decision made? So, let's say we released the RFP in a situation I don't think is likely to happen, but for the sake of the example, we get zero responses, right? At that point, obviously, we would decide we need to re-release the RFP. Or, we could wait until further in the process, whether it be after reviewing the proposals or after looking at software demonstrations, and at, you know, any point in time, based on the city's policies, could decide to, you know, terminate that procurement and re-release the RFP. So, depending on when that decision's made, that would be the deciding factor on how much additional time is needed.
Okay. Thank you. Is your hand raised? Councilmember Mohan? Your light's on.
My comment was, this RFP process is so arduous and so time-consuming. And the one thing we may be forgetting is that it is a competitive process. So, it doesn't matter if it's 2.5 million or 3.7, 2 million or 3.7 million. The RFP, the response that they turn in is not dictated by the amount, because obviously, a price is a big factor when it comes to selecting the right vendor. So, in my opinion, I think maybe we are exaggerating the effect of the amount that we are setting aside. We're not telling them, but somehow, they could find out if they went into the staff reports. But I am not sure that's a compelling enough argument to come up with some other number.
Okay. And thank you. And we've been on this topic for quite a while now. Mayor Chow, can you please wrap up? And then, we'll go to Councilmember Wong.
So, apparently, according to staff, the final price will be a negotiation. And you don't go into a negotiation with, here's the amount I'm willing to... You are not going to get a good price going into a negotiation with your pocketbook open. So, a mid-tier, and then we can possibly say that with... I'm waiting to modify my motion to say that the budget allocation now is 2.5 million, with a potential to increase to 3.744, with justification from the RFP, so that it's clear that there is willingness, if there is actually a need for a higher amount.
And your secondor? Through the city clerk, who's the secondor on this? For Councilmember Chow is just, I mean, Mayor Chow has just modified her motion.
It was Councilmember Wong.
Do you, Councilmember Wong, do you accept the amendment?
I don't accept the amendment, and I apologize. I do not accept that amendment. I wanted to get a point of inquiry to figure out what, a point of information to figure out what motion we are on at the moment, so that I know what we're dispating. That's really why, that's why I raised my hand, as I was a little confused, because I wanted to call the question, but I didn't know what question we're calling. So, I apologize.
So, there are three motions on the table, by my count. I believe the second substitute motion was the one that the mayor was attempting to amend. And if I recall that correctly, that would be a motion to approve the staff recommendation with a $2.5 million budget modification. The clerk can correct me if my recollection of that is wrong. But that would be the second substitute motion, and that would be the motion to vote on, the first, when council is ready to vote.
In that case, city, I'll second it to move with us, Wong.
So, Councilmember Wong, you are seconding Mayor Chow's amended motion. And would the city clerk please read that one back?
The second substitute motion? So, the second substitute motion is Chow moved and Wong seconded the staff recommendation as amended with an amount of $2.5 million for the budget modification.
With the amendment to go...
With the amendment, yeah.
Okay. And could we hear that amendment?
That, well, the amendment was with, it was with an amount of $2.5 million for the budget modification.
Oh, I'm sorry. With this new addition the Mayor Chow has added?
So, it was, let's see...
Which just got seconded.
Modification was with a potential increase to 3.744...
526.
526.
No, you are not.
Okay, just one second. I lost where I was. With justification from the RFP, so that it's clear that there is a willingness, and actually a need for the higher amount.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's, yeah, fine.
Vice Mayor, if I may. So, I don't think there's, there's certainly no reason why council can't vote on the motion as amended, but I would just point out that, you know, that a higher amount would require further action from council, based on my understanding of the motion.
And what would that further action be?
To vote, that would require an actual vote to increase the budget.
At what time in the process?
I think, I think that that would be up to, well, in the first instance, up to the IT director and city manager, as to the right time to bring that back. But just my only point really being is that the amendment doesn't, wouldn't really change the fact that if there was a need to increase the budget, council would have to take a vote on that at some point.
And, okay, so, may I ask, would that most likely happen when the RFP came back, and we see that there's a justification to go up to the higher amount, and at that point, where we solidly appropriate the higher dollar amount?
Yeah, no, I think that that would make sense, yes.
Okay. So, without any further, I see one more hand raised, and then I'd like to go to the vote on this item.
Point of inquiry here. If we approve what we have as written, we're basically saying we have approved up to this amount, staff doesn't have to come back regardless of what happens in that decision process, unless they need more money. Is that what we're saying? I just want to make sure we're clear.
I would just, so, I would point out that staff will have to come, given the size of this contract, staff would have to come back to get council approval for the contract in any case. But under the amended second substitute motion that's on the table, there would also be required to be a council vote to increase budget appropriations in excess of 2.5 million.
Okay. But we haven't written a blank check that says you can spend up to 2.5 million, because we still have to approve an RFP, just for the, so the public understands what's going on here.
That's correct.
Yeah, not the RFP, but the contract, yes.
The contract, the final contract. Okay, cool. Just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. If we're all ready, if there's no objections, I would like our Madam City Clerk to please
Through the Vice Mayor, can we hear the motion one more time so that we're all on the same page? And I want to make sure that Terry is feeling comfortable.
Okay, so, we're going through... Pardon, Mayor, you haven't been recognized. I'm sorry. Will the city clerk please read out the second amended motion?
Yes, and I do have a clarification at the end question. So, the second substitute motion, Chow moved and Wong seconded the staff recommendation with an amendment for an amount of $2.5 million for the budget modification. Chow modified the substitute, the second substitute motion with a potential to increase to 3.744, the full amount, 526, with justification from the RFP that it's clear that there is a willingness to actually need the higher amount. My question for clarification was that Councilmember Fruin also made a potential friendly amendment to include check-ins for council approval of the final contract and any additional funding, and Wong accepted that. So, is that included in the second substitute motion?
So, it wasn't originally intended that way, but I'm happy to have you construed as such, if only because...
Well, that's what I need clarified.
Yeah, if only because, I think it would give, you know, if in the course of the development process of the RFP, and later, there's a clear need to go and provide additional budget allocation, it gives us a mechanism for making that happen.
Through the city attorney, does the city, does the mayor need to accept that as well?
Yes, so the mayor, the mayor who made the motion, and Councilmember Wong who seconded the motion, would need to accept a friendly amendment.
Mayor Chow, do you accept?
Yes, accept.
Okay. So, are we, I don't see any hands raised. Are we ready to vote? Madam City Clerk, will you...
Can I get one last clarification? What was Councilmember Fruin's amendment?
It was, if the Vice Mayor is okay with me repeating that, it's to, whoa, now I lost it. A friendly amendment to include check-ins for council approval of the final contract and any additional funding.
So, we're talking about 2.5 million?
Up, with a potential increase up to 3.744526, with justification.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
For the second substitute motion, Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Mohan voting no. The motion for the second substitute motion as amended and modified.
Wow. Okay. So, thank you very much. And we're moving on to, well, I'd actually, I believe I might need to ask for an extension of time for the meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, as a point of order, we would ordinarily adjourn by rule at 10:30, but given the nature of the city attorney contract that's on the calendar, it seems to me appropriate, not only that we would move, that we would extend time, but that we also do so in order to change the order of items on the calendar so that we can address the city attorney contract next.
I agree, Councilmember Fruen, that we should look at item 12, the appointment of the city attorney, next. And what's the process for that?
So I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to extend time to hear Agenda item number 12.
Okay. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So next is action item 12. The subject is the appointment of Floyd Andrews as city attorney and approval of contract for the city attorney legal services with Alshar and Winder LLP. There is no staff presentation for this item. Council interviewed and selected Floyd Andrews as city attorney and, with Alshar Winder, and appointed Councilmember Fruen and myself to the contract negotiating subcommittee. The contract is a desk item. We recommend approval of the contract appointing Floyd Andrews to serve as city attorney. There should not be any further questions, but I will ask, are there questions from the council regarding the contract at this time? I see one hand raised from Mayor Chow.
So the starting date of the contract is tomorrow or next week?
I believe it is Sunday, because that's when my appointment expires. When my, I misspoke. It's when my, my, the effective date of my resignation.
Not Friday? I thought Friday is...
Fri- Friday, Friday is the last business day, yes.
Okay. And then it's a term of one year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The interim city attorney will be outside for two days a week?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's, that's a little bit outside the scope of what we're discussing here, but I, but, but yes, that's the conversation that, that, that we have had at this point.
Okay.
I had a question.
Councilmember Mohan?
Is there a provision in the contract that the, the contract can be terminated if the full-blown recruitment is completed for the full-time attorney?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the city attorneys will, will serve at the pleasure of the city council, just as, just as I do.
Okay, but, but we have a contract, right?
That's correct. But the contract can be terminated.
Yes. Councilmember Fruen, would you like to speak to the termination?
Not so much to the termination as to the reopeners, in addition to that, that we would have the opportunity to reexamine certain of the terms pursuant to the contract, given the relatively short span of time on which this was done.
Correct.
That is a, that is a provision to help protect, really, our interests and make sure that costs can be contained.
Correct. And so with the reopeners, it's 60 days. So we will be looking at this again, because we needed to do this in a fairly rapid manner. So now we will go to public comments, and I asked the Madam City Clerk to see if there are any public comments on this item.
Vice Mayor, I see no requests to speak for this item.
Okay. So, closing the public comment time, thank, I want to thank the Assistant City Attorney, Michael Wu, for all of his work on this item. I request that Madam City Clerk conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Fruen?
I did want to make one quick comment first, which is just, you know, I will note that though both myself and Councilmember Mohan did not vote in favor of this particular applicant, as is noted in the report out from closed, I am not going to make the city a bad faith negotiator and vote against a contract that I helped negotiate. But I do want to underscore that I am deeply concerned about costs. And the reason for that is simply that I've, I've looked at the history of charges from previous experience the city has had with this specific firm, not necessarily this specific attorney, but this specific firm. And they're available in publicly disclosed Public Records Act requests totaling close to half a million dollars for a little over a year's worth of contiguous service. That, to me, as an attorney, is a lot. And I, I know that rates can look good on paper, but the other way that you make a lot of money as an attorney is to rack up lots of billable hours. So this is not to expect that that is what will happen here, but it is my, my challenge to our new city attorney to help us contain costs, and there are lots of ways that, that we can do that through the advice that, that comes to council. And I really appreciate your partnership on that. So with that, yes, I will vote in favor.
Vice Mayor, I apologize. I did not catch the mover and secondor for this item.
I think you moved on to a vote. I don't know if we actually entertained a motion. So I will make a motion to approve.
Please do.
You are quite right. Okay, so you've moved the item?
Yes.
Okay, Moore second. And I, and I do want to make sure before, before we, well, I'll say this at the end. So Councilmember Mohan?
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up on Councilmember Fruen's statement that we did not vote for this firm. And I just, my comments are that I am and I was somewhat concerned about the law firm's association with the Valco issue during a very dark and troubling time in our city's history. We have come a long way from that divisiveness that pervaded the city at that time, and I just want to make sure that we continue to move forward, and I have every confidence that we will. So despite my reservations, I will approve the, the contract with the law firm.
Thank you. I see no further hands raised. Mayor Chow?
So the Floyd Andrews is in person at the meeting?
Yes, she is.
So do we ask her to come up after the vote or before? That is appropriate.
That's not actually...
We vote first?
Because after the vote, the agenda item is over, is it?
Correct. And it, after the, the meeting, we're certainly welcome to meet and greet our new, the new city attorney. But for now, that's, that's not on the agenda. Would the city attorney like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I understand the nature of the request was...
I thought it would be nice for Floyd to come up so people can see the new city attorney, interim city attorney.
As a...
I don't see that from the remote location.
As a, as a point of order, I think, what you...
That'd be appropriate.
So we have a, we have a point of order from Councilmember Fruen?
Yeah, to suggest a solution to what it, it sounds like Mayor Chow would like to do, which is for Ms. Andrews to come in and present herself, is that you could reopen public comment, and she could make public comment as a member of the public.
Would we want to vote first?
We vote.
Then, then the item would be closed.
Hmm, to emphasize that.
And you could still reopen public comment with a motion on the table. Yeah, I, I think either public comment or not, if council, you know, wishes to entertain remarks from, from Floyd, I mean, I think that would be appropriate. It's, it's, it's not necessary, but it would certainly be appropriate.
Would Floyd Andrews like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself and welcome?
Thank you for giving me just a moment. And I had something written up. I'm not gonna, you know, do that. You've heard me speak before. I just want to express my sincere gratitude. I am truly honored to be, hopefully, appointed as your city attorney. I know Alshar and Winder as well, standing behind me as the firm. And there are a number of points, but the main one is fiscal responsibility. I get you. We're not charging you for my time here tonight. This is just meant as a time for me to witness the council and be here for this moment, and I'm grateful to be here. So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, and it's great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Fruen. Councilmember Mohan, aye. Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So welcome to our new city attorney, Floyd Andrews. We look forward to working with you. And again, thank you to our city attorney Jensen for all of your work on behalf of the city. Thank you. Thank you. So question, I just moved item, item 12 in front of item 11. Can we still keep going on item 11? Or what are the rules?
We'd need a further, further motion for item 11.
Okay. Do I have such a motion that we will go over item 11? Or do you want to postpone it to the next meeting? Pardon?
Don't move it for item 11 to continue, I mean, to go forward with item 11.
Okay. And we'll need a second. Seeing none, pardon? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Wong has seconded it. So to hear item 11, question about if the time, we're going to need another extension of time after 11 o'clock, like, most likely?
So you, so, I mean, the motion could be to, I understand the, the motion would extend the meeting to continue item, to hear item 11 to its, its conclusion. That, that was my understanding of the motion.
Okay. Thank you. So Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Fruen?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
No.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion fails with Wong and Chow voting no. Wong and Chow voting no.
Okay. Okay. And so with that, the special meeting of the Cupertino City Council for February 19th, 2025, is adjourned. Good night.